Thanks.
All right, you guys are live.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the 5:00 PM Village of America Court of Trustees work session. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you will be. Okay. We have the judges online, waiting for us on a call so that we can discuss an executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person who works for the courts. I think it's 501D of the open meetings law. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So move. Second.
Orgy call roll.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
DeFoe?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, we will see you on the conference call.
Aye.
Can I shut the video off?
Everybody back?
Yep.
Yes.
Nora, you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
You got no picture nor?
Why, I'm here.
Okay, Augie's gotta get me back.
Sally or Cliff, Hernani needs an invite to the meeting.
Oh, and it's the chief.
Alright, I'll get him on.
Thanks.
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I lost track of time.
I just got back from executive session, you're not late at all.
You're fine.
Okay, welcome back to Board of Trustees work session. We just left executive session, motion was made to go into executive session. Motion was made in executive session to leave executive session. We're now back to our regular agenda and we're gonna skip to the fireman's parade carnival and fireworks because we have esteemed Chief Primrose with us.
Thank you.
Hello Chief, how are you?
I'm okay.
Okay Chief, so we have a fireman's parade, a fireman's carnival and fireworks that are scheduled for that are scheduled for the
End of June, beginning of July.
Okay. What's the fire department's thoughts Chief?
Well, to be honest, at this point, a lot of the people are saying that it's probably not a good idea to hold them. There's been some points of view on various sides. The first, of course, is the question as to whether or not we'll even be allowed to open up if we decide to go. As to whether or not, you know, how many of the restrictions are going to be still in place. You know, and they're there for our safety and for everyone's safety, we understand that. But then the next question is, if we were to go, and that's a great big if, how many people would come? And quite frankly, how many of my personnel would even be willing to come and work? Because I'm hearing general rumors from the department that a lot of the people won't come to work anyway. But we were looking for some guidance from the board as to what they were thinking was gonna, you know, happen as far as, would we even, you know, will the restrictions still be in place? Do we know? Do we have any idea or what?
Well, I'm not a scientist and I'm not a doctor, but everything I've seen, everything I've read, everything I heard, social distancing will not be over by June. They're talking about how to social distance September when the kids go back to school. There will still be the six feet cordon that's supposed to be around you. You know, there will be, you know, anybody that's been to the parade or to the carnival or to especially the fireworks knows that there's no way to do that.
I agree. But I still had to, you know, keep the options open until a final decision was made.
Final decision has to be made.
The carnival committee basically said that our next meeting, which I believe was scheduled for May 20 something, hold on, let me look. Would have been May 21st would have been the last day for a go-no-go decision. But obviously, you know, the, listen, the village is gracious, you know, all of you are gracious enough to allow us to do this every year as as part of our fundraising efforts for some of our operations. You know, so obviously, your input, especially given the climate right now, the conditions, the situation is vitally important. For a number of years now, the village has actually paid fully for the actual fireworks. Which I know, you know, we all know that money is tight this year. And possibly next year and who knows how into the future. Were you all planning at this point on holding the fireworks still or were you planning on cancelling them or what?
I'll let the village manager speak to that.
So Chief, we looked into cancelling them and we can cancel them, we can offer another date. We can talk to the vendor about another date, as long as that date according to the contract is not between July 1st and July 4th, we can reschedule them. But Mr. Spalzino has been helping me and providing some guidance. There was a 10% fee in the contract, which I don't believe we have to pay in order to move them from one date to another. But we were thinking about moving the fireworks since there's no way to not pay for them, so.
Okay, so we're already obligated to hold the fireworks in some way, shape or form?
Right, but not on that day.
Not on that day.
I understand.
We can move them.
There might be, there might be a new tradition in the village of Christmas Eve fireworks.
Or New Year's Eve or something like that.
So Jerry, is it your understanding that the new date has to be in the year 2020?
No, it just can't be next year, July 1 to July 4.
Okay, so it can't be July 1 to July 4 2021. Got it.
Well, I'll let the board speak for themselves, but from my vantage point, I think it would be very, very problematic to have gatherings where people are very, very close to each other, very close proximity to each other, people coming from, you know, the fireman's parade and the carnival. You know, as you know, and we welcome it, but people come from all over.
Yes, of course.
So, you know, I mean, we're not gonna be in a position where we're gonna be able to test people who are coming to the parade or the carnival.
No, of course not.
You know, I, my guess is Chief, is that it would be, it would take a miracle for this to be lifted by then, but like I said, I'm not a doctor and, you know, but
I don't disagree with you. You know, it is a difficult decision, you know, it is in my opinion, one of the higher points in the year within the village.
Yeah, I agree.
No doubt.
You know, while, yes, you know, the fire department runs it and the fire department definitely gets a benefit from it. I think the community as a whole gets a benefit from that week.
Oh yeah.
So cancelling it is certainly an issue. Now, as far as rescheduling, we've actually inquired with our carnival people, the people who run the rides and such, and that is not gonna be an option for us. So for as far as the carnival, it's either when we normally hold it or it's not at all. Just so you're aware of that. So if you intend to do fireworks later in the year, enjoy. We cannot do a carnival around that, just so you know.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thanks for the heads up on that. Anybody else in the board wanna chime in here?
I mean, I just think it's a sad decision, but I think it's the decision that has to be made.
I don't disagree.
I think that's right.
I think it's very honorable Chief, that you're as candid as you are, it's a very tough, tough thing to have to come to grips with, but that's what we're all faced with at this point.
And I would hate for the village to decide to go ahead with it under the big if scenario and then to put firefighters in the position of feeling like they're somehow letting the village down by not manning the carnival. That would be a horrible situation.
Okay, I don't think they're going to. As I said, a fair number of our people who've come back to the question, there are a lot of people who are of the opinion that they wouldn't want to be down there to work because they wouldn't want to be in the close proximity either.
I don't blame them.
So, it, you know, it makes a lot of sense to not do the carnival this year, I agree. Personally, and this is strictly, I have loved the carnival since I was a kid. Okay, even though for me it is a very, has always been a very stressful time, a time of a lot of hard physical labor. Because I am very involved in it, I've always loved it. And the idea that while I'm the fire chief, we have to not hold it is extremely painful to me. But I think it's probably the right, the right way to go at this point.
Yeah, I agree with you Chief, and I feel the same way, you know, as being mayor, the first time, it's not held. I mean, the first time I went was in 1980. And used to be able to play cards.
Actually, no, we didn't play cards. We had dice and wheels.
Nah, they had blackjack at one point.
That was St. Vito's, I believe.
Tom, because I brought up two guys from the neighborhood to play.
Oh, okay, maybe I'm wrong.
And they raffled off a car.
Yes, that was a long time ago.
Yep.
Alright, yeah, so I guess the message you could take back to the fire council is that the Board of Trustees looks upon this, you know, with, you know, a real concern that this would be an unsafe situation and unsafe year to do it in.
Okay.
You know, I hope that the carnival committee comes to the same conclusion and we could all be on the same page.
As I said, we hadn't, we decided that a go-no-go date had to be May 21st. Being the last meeting before the month that it would actually start. And while most of us were of the opinion that it would probably have to not go, we still were operating at that point under the, we didn't want 100% say no until we had more information. The fact that you guys are looking to move the fireworks, you know, it's certainly another nail in the coffin besides the other situations, you know. The safety of the public, that's what we're here for, is the safety of the public. We don't want to be the ones to be spreading anything, for sure.
We're here for you know, when the bell goes off, you guys are in charge of everything that happens. You know, we gotta make sure as a Board of Trustees and as a village manager, that we're doing everything we can to protect the public. Like you said, these are unprecedented times, you know, hope to God we never have to do anything like this again.
I agree. Alright. Thank you for the input. I can't make the official decision, that has to come from the committee. But I'm 99% sure that that's gonna be their decision.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks Chief.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Alright. Hi.
So, Tom, before we leave this subject, are we gonna go back to the fireworks later in the meeting? Are we gonna do it now?
Why don't we do it now, while we're on it?
It's up to you, Tom, I just
We can do it now. Jerry, you wanna talk to us about the fireworks?
So, I guess the discussion is alternate dates.
I'm wondering if we could do a July 4th 2022. I mean, I think it's crazy that they would hold us to some deposit under these circumstances. It's a national emergency, it's a state emergency, it's a county emergency, it's a village emergency. And it's a July 4th firework presentation to force us in this economic climate and in this health climate to hold fireworks on a time that we don't want to hold them. I mean, I think they'd be crazy to hold us to that anyway, but if they did, I would just say we'll reschedule them for 2022 and maybe we'll go with someone else in 2021. I mean
What's the date, what are the four, what are the four days that we can't reschedule July 12th through the 4th, or first to the 4th?
Yeah, first to the 4th.
Now that's their contract, that doesn't take into account Kelly's arguing about the inability to have fireworks and that sort of thing. Not sure we're gonna get there over an $18,000 contract.
I just looked at the 2021 July calendar and July 4th is a Sunday, so the holiday will be observed on the Monday. So maybe we just do the fireworks a day later.
Why can't we, I see what you're saying, I see what you're both saying, but why can't we just say this to them, listen, we'll pay you for this, but you're gonna do it next year on July 4th. This way it saves us next year's July 4th. And you know, we're not gonna pay you a penalty. If you want to charge us a penalty, we won't use you again.
Right, and see what they say. And if they force our hand, we can either do it on the 5th as Nora suggests, or we can say, well then we want to do it in 2022.
I mean, I do think that Labor Day is risky, like even postponing it to the next major holiday and and Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve are, you know, gonna have a limited appeal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very limited. And can you imagine the village presidents like saying, look at this money, they're burning up to have a Christmas Eve fireworks?
Okay, we'll go back at them. You don't have to prod me to fight with them.
Alright, it is 5:48. We don't have to go to the executive session again, right?
No, well, I don't, I don't know if you want to talk about the information
Oh, we do have to go to
Received earlier today.
Well, we have to go to the executive session for the landing on
That one's not, that one's not ready. Greg has not been able to do the analysis you're gonna need in order to consider that one.
Okay.
And it wasn't in our packet anyway, I mean, it wasn't
Right. That we weren't gonna do. There was that issue today though that came up. Towards the end of the day that, I don't know whether it's executive session, but I would certainly like advice of council before we talk about it.
It's a lawsuit. Well, why don't we save 15 minutes at the end to that, because we don't have dinner.
Okay.
We don't have dinner, Augie.
No, we don't have dinner.
You and I could get dinner. Alright, let's get through the things that we have on tonight and then we'll go to the front balance policy, because I know everybody wants to talk about that. Mosquito control program 2020. Jerry, you want to keep Dominic for another year?
I do, yep.
And you think that that would, after that year, we would be on solid footing to run this all on our own?
Yeah, we need one more year of observation and assistance in order to fine tune the program that we're currently planning on employing right now. And so Dominic is very valuable for us, but because I want to have multiple years of success, I just don't want to have a lucky year and then we want to be able to really develop a program where we're doing this right, finally.
How is the program different this year than last year?
It's not. What happens is, last year Dominic was just ramping up and Dave was brand new. And so everything was kind of like a trial. Now we're trying to do more monitoring, so we can do less applications. That's what we're trying to do this time.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Question, the service agreement is, are you, the one in the backup is for last year, is that just, is that just for reference? Or or you're intending to just have a resolution and type a new one?
Yeah, it was the same, I know that the the expected amount was the same as last year, but I think we did receive a new one, we just may have attached the older one. Dan, can you take a look for it?
Yeah, I'll take a look at that, give me
It says May 1st to September 30th, 2019. What's in our packet, what's in the backup is the old contract.
Yeah.
It's $6,100.
The contract in early year.
And it says technical visit 200 and site visit 750, visit. So should we make it kind of up to, not to exceed 6, 6100?
Yeah, and he did send us the 2019, he didn't change it. I have an email from him on April 7th where he sent us, he sent us the old one, I guess he he sent us the old one, I guess he didn't change, or he might have sent us the wrong version. But we don't have a newer version, we'll change the dates. Uh, and we should, you know, if if the board wants to consider it, consider it as a do not exceed sixty-one hundred dollars.
And if he can do a less bit, one less visit, that would be great, too.
So then, then the resolution in the resolve would read that the village manager is authorized to execute an agreement with Evani Wetlands and Vector Management LLC, and then insert not to exceed, exceed sixty-one hundred.
Sixty-one hundred, that would be fine.
You provide, blah, 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 right?
Sure.
What does amend that when we're doing the, remember that and amend it when we're doing at the regular meeting.
Okay.
Pardon me, uh, okay, so that's good. Uh, term extension of DEC order and consent. So we we we, we got a formal letter from the DEC saying that, uh, we have another year, is that correct?
We have until twenty, January of twenty twenty-two.
So that's another
Year.
Year.
January twenty twenty-one, right?
I Dan, I have a suggestion on the resolution, if we can go to that.
Resolution for the, uh, DEC?
Yes. It's in the last line of the resolve.
It's on page one twenty-four, for those of you on the PDF.
Currently reads resolve that the village manager is authorized to undertake such administrative acts as may be necessary to effectuate this agreement. I would like to add, it's necessary to continue to try to effectuate this agreement. I'd like it a little little looser because we may now have another pandemic, who knows what's gonna happen.
And and is it really reas- is it reasonable for us to be able to complete all this work by January twenty twenty-two?
We just promised, yeah, but we we
I know, so, we've been promising for years, is it reasonable, is the question?
My concern is that we don't have, we don't, we needed, we're gonna have to have a consultant, we're not gonna have the village engineer. Jerry has more things on his plate than most people have, and their appetizer. Uh, I just want to have, I don't want to commit that we will absolutely without question commit to that date. But I think what we want to do is just say we're gonna continue to try to do, you know, do everything in our power to get there.
Let let me just, well, Jerry, and not Jerry, Bob.
Yes.
Am I wrong, or i- is this a reprieve they've given us to January twenty twenty-two?
It it is a reprieve, but you're committing to do it on that date, regardless of what you say in the resolution. The consent order says you're doing it by January twenty twenty-two. I, I I understand the consent order, but this is our resolution. And what I'm trying to say is, you know, if we run into trouble, we need to be able to go back to them and say, we have a problem. We're not, we're not trying to weasel out of anything, we're trying to do it. And here's our problem, and this is, this is what it's gonna be, and we would like you to work with us. And that's what, by changing the language a little bit like that, it doesn't take away from the fact that we are gonna try and do everything necessary to do it. But it does give us the the authority to go back by the resolution to the DEC to talk to them, which we have anyway, but I'm more comfortable having that in the li- in the resolution.
I have a concern that by making the change, I don't want to raise any red flags with the DEC that we're anticipating we might not be able to do this. Does
The resolution says he's authorized, doesn't say he must.
Okay.
He's authorized to do what has to be done. I'm not, I'm not getting the distinction, do you?
And and also, we we just went hat in hand here.
Yeah.
Can I share my screen on, because I have it on the board there? Right? So what are, what are you suggesting, Dan, to say what, we solved that the village might authorize to?
I'm down at the bottom, Victor, the last, the last line. And it says, it may be necessary to effectuate this agreement, I'm suggesting necessary to continue to try to effectuate this agreement.
I I think it doesn't matter either way, because really it's the consent order that
Yeah.
The consent order that handles, so if you want, I I I have no objection, and I I don't think it undermines anything, Bob, are you?
No.
I I hear Kelly's concerned, but if you can clear with you, we're fine. Okay.
I would, I wouldn't be dependent on it and say, well, we we put that in a resolution, so we're not gonna get it done, I mean, you know, they have the hammer, you know, we're the
I'm not suggesting that we drag our feet in any way, shape, manner, or form.
But no, what I'm saying is, it offers no protection.
I, I think that's a matter of perspective, and I understand everybody's perspective, but my, my, and my, from my perspective, it adds us a little comfort.
So say it again, Dan.
After the word necessary to, insert continue to try to. And everything else does the same.
Continue to try to sm- tos, uh, necessary how about would undertake such administrative acts and best efforts to effectuate this agreement?
I don't have a problem with that.
There was just too many twos in yours, and it didn't flow. Is everybody proud of that?
Yep, yeah, fine.
Yes, and I have a couple comments, since we're right there.
Well, just a bit, let's make sure, Sally, do you have that change? Or Augie?
Augie?
Sally, Augie, somebody?
Agreement, yeah, oh, oh, yeah.
I have it.
Augie has it.
I have the change.
All right, Sally has.
To both, to both the resolutions.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Victor, can you take, you want to talk about something on the screen?
Yeah, quick, quick comments on the same resolution. Uh, actually, uh, the first we're asked, can you see my, my, my highlight here?
Yeah.
I suggest we delete it, because we didn't pay that amount, we only paid twenty, twenty-five hundred, and the the rest was held in abeyance uh, to see if we were, if we were, uh, in good behavior. If we are not in good behavior, they could have slapped that, slapped us with the the rest. Fortunately, they didn't. And it's, of course, it's twenty-something or thirty per day per violation, so we'll be good anyway. So anyway, this is, this is not accurate. I've seen, I've seen, I have the document, so.
I want to take that out.
Just strike this, included are seven thousand civil penalty, right?
Just very
You want to strike the whole thing, or just the twenty-five hundred?
No, just take payment off, we didn't pay that amount, we didn't pay it.
That, Victor, that sentence is just memorializing what the terms and conditions of the settlement are, it's it's fine to take it out, but I just wanted to note that. It's not necessarily what we paid, but just what the terms and conditions are for the settlement.
Okay, and then this, this other section, uh, the village, um, requested, but it was not approved by DEC on May, June twenty-first, and that's explicit, and it's, it's in the letter that they sent us. So I I suggest we just remove that. Uh, I think it's unnecessary, and it's actually contrary to what the the DC said. But I do want, the important thing is that thank, thanks to Jerry and to Bob, they moved quickly and they got the DEC to extend this for us. I would like actually to replace that whereas with something I think that's very important. Uh, today, I s- I circulated, uh, and I'll be quick here, because I have a lot of things. Actually, the way, the way this works, uh, Jerry, is that that in addition to the DC consent order, uh-huh, there's a, there is an, um, uh, intermunicipal agreement with the the county of Westchester that essentially, uh, is a mirror of this. That says that we, we, it's under, uh, it's under their, uh, it's under their own, you know, the county law, sewer law, but it replicates the same actions of reme- investigation remediation and and and, um, and the, um, schedule. So, uh, they, they go, they go hand in hand. So just be mindful of that, I I put it in the backup. So so, uh, I, what I would recommend, and I can, I have, I have the language here, I I just typed it, which says, uh, whereas January fourth, twenty sixteen, the village also entered into an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Westchester's that requires investigation and corrective actions, and additional reporting in line with the DC consent order, essentially those two two things go together. And the reporting to the county is very important, as is the reporting with the DEC. There's two, there's two factors here, one is, of course, do the work. But the other thing is, they really want you to report, and they have to, they, the order on consent extends the time, but extends, extends, uh, those reporting duties. And they're two-fold, they're in the middle of the year, the semi-annual and the annual. And you have to do that regardless of the work you do or not, I actually suggest and recommend that you file, if you have not filed the ones for previous years, which is what I understand, that they are filed in the next few weeks. And also, we we have to file similar reports with the county. So so the two things go hand in hand, and we just need to tie them together and move forward.
So I'm sending the same report that I sent to the DC to the county, I'm just copying the county.
Yeah, it's a little different, you're engineer, or or you can just look at the, about the old, old ones. And 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 you can, and you can follow that. But the the requirement to report is 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 different, but that's why I I just highlight, then you, then you have your staff, and you have the attorneys to to help you. I've just been following this for quite a while. And actually, for to last to finish, why this is important is because the county of Westchester has an order on consent with BC as well. So if we don't do this, the, there's not one, but two hammers. Right? There you go.
All right.
So with that amendment, uh, we can probably move it in the
Can you read the, your language one more time to make sure that, uh, Sally and Augie get it?
Yes.
Or Victor, if you have it typed out, if you could just email it to me, and then I will add it into the resolution before you guys go into the regular meeting.
So I'll do that right away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, for
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Pardon me. Uh, joint paving agreement, Con Ed on Fenimore Road, Jerry?
I'm gonna pass this one on to Hernanny, since he's waiting patiently to talk about it, but this is his, uh, this was his doing, he got us quarter of a mil from, uh, from Con Ed. I don't know how he did it, but I'm not gonna ask questions. Go ahead, Hernanny.
Thank you. Um, so as you know, uh, Con Ed did, uh, the gas main installation, a transmission main that was supposed to go from East Chester to, uh, Boston Post Road over here in Maranick, and, um, phases, the last phase that they had to do was through the industrial area, or I said the last phase they had to do in the village, was through the industrial area between Bishop um, when they completed the work, uh, I approached them about paving from curb to curb. And we got into a negotiation, they have a program called a joint pavement restoration program that they have. Uh, after a couple of weeks or so, or months of of, of back and forth negotiation, and what would the right price would be, we settled on this, this amount, now this amount is reflective of what we pay for paving under the Morano contract, the existing paving contract. So, as you know, the contract that we have right now with Morano is quantity-based, based on tons of asphalt, square yards of milling, striping, things like that. So I came up with a number for night work on, uh, Fenimore Road to do the paving, it came up to about a quarter million dollars. Um, they send us this agreement that we must sign before they release the money. Uh, and and what you have in front of you is permission to give, uh, very the authority to sign the agreement so they can send the money. If, now that's, that's for just a lump sum, whether we do it at night is a different story, we negotiated to do night work, so it's a little bit higher of a rate. If we're able to do it during the day, we save a few bucks. But, um, obviously, doing paving in the, in the, in the industrial area during the day is trouble, problematic, however, if we can do it before this COVID, um, the quarantine is over, right now, there's basically no traffic in the be perfect to do during the daytime, you can save some money. About thirty thousand dollars.
Would you have to divert all the traffic from Fenimore, or did shut down half of Fenimore?
No, we do half at a time, we do two lanes, and because it's, Fenimore is four lanes wide.
Right.
So we could do two lanes and two lanes, there's no parking on Fenimore during this thing anyway, nobody's there. So we just shut down two lanes, mill it, shut down the other two lanes, mill it, and then come back the next day, pave two lanes, pave two lanes.
Yeah, it's a two-day job.
Yeah. And then the striping would be another day, but the majority of the work would be over two days.
Okay. Anybody have a question?
Included in that, uh, should be mentioned that there's three intersections between Bishop and Boston Post Road that they had to open up again to to cut in some valve boxes, those intersections are also included in this money.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
One, one question, all right, well, first of all, thank you, and second, uh, who's signing this, you or Jerry?
I would.
Yeah, it would be Jerry.
There you go, then change that.
It looks like both, there's a signature for both.
Well, they sent it to me, and then I sent it to Jerry, and I said, Jerry, I think you're the one that's got to sign this.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Hernanny, I gotta say, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck in your new position.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You won't be far, right?
White Plains.
Yep, not too far.
Well, it's always good to know people in White Plains.
Yes.
Uh, next, that needs to be done for tonight, uh, marine pile driving.
Yeah, so we had some damage, um, in between, well, when we bid the job, no, when we awarded the job and we were waiting to set up the job, um, there was some significant damage to, um, well, what was the extent of it, it was eight foot by twenty foot, Hernanny, can you explain a little more?
I sent the memo out, uh, right after it happened. I think the board should have gotten it during two meetings ago, I believe.
Yeah.
It's on this agenda.
Yeah. Uh, they explained how the damage happened, or we believe the damage happened, there are two docks, floating docks, eight by twenty that are below gangways for A and B dock and C Dock. Eight by twenty docks were destroyed, um, due to tidal influence from the supermoon that we had that week. And, um, this, this reflects replacing those two in addition to the other ones that we're doing. It also, um, it also adds two tide slide rails for the gangway. If you read the memo, you'll notice that, uh, part of the solution that I suggested was putting, uh, tide slide rails on the gangway, so it's not fixed to the sea wall, it can go the tide up and down.
Yeah.
Um, that's in there as well, and then the rollers at the bottom of the gangways are a little worn, so we threw that in there, so we, the whole gangway can now roll and move more freely during a high tide tide.
Mayor, this is work, obviously, that we have to do, um, we really don't have too much of a choice, we just happen to have a contractor, um, available to do it. So we would be asking for this addition to that contract.
Okay, anybody on board, questions, concerns?
No. We have to do it if we want to try and open up.
Yeah.
And get a little revenue, we have to, it's not, they're not usable.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, when's the opening date?
The fifteenth, and the contract, we expect the contract to be completed with this additional work, I think, right, Hernanny, with this additional work by the ninth or the tenth.
If not sooner, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we gotta get moving on it. All right, so it'll be on for the regular session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so next thing we're gonna go to is the fund balance policy. Uh, Victor, this was, uh, something you brought up, what you want to talk about?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor, yes, I, I I just, we've, we've, we've been talking about this for for quite a while, and, uh, several training sessions that I've been fortunate to attend in the last couple of years. Especially, there was one very intense, we took, and Trusty Lucas came with me for a whole week.
We did.
Office of the, of the the Controller's Office really gave us a, you know, a very intense weekend, they, they, they really spelled this one out. Uh, so it's been, it's been in our, in our heads, and I know in in many other, uh, you know, other people in the, in the community and elsewhere, so, uh, this but the situation we are, I think it'll just give us, give us a a very good reference to to how to handle, uh, that reserve. So, um, looking, we don't, if you want, I can go in detail, but if you, if you see, uh, in, it's, it's listed there in the resolution somewhere, it gives you the, that in the last, well, there, there are very, several pieces to it, I think, let, let's go in order, let's go in order, so one, one thing, one first thing is that it's really recommended, and and we've been, we've been due to do this. Many municipalities Many municipalities and towns have it. It helps with with uh. With your creditors, it helps with your budget, it helps in 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 control. So it has just a lot of a lot of benefits. And then the the the, let's go to the central issue. The central issue is probably what is a reasonable amount, right? Many towns have twenty five percent. You know, they tell you in the instruction that it's some, what is they didn't, the the reason they'd say they say it's reasonable is because they. They didn't want to kind of impose anything on the municipalities. Everything is different. Actually, this this comes from a reform in the. About ten years ago, maybe a little more than that, because it before it was impossible to do this. This is in the it is actually in the slides. But but then the it this was allowed. So what is reasonable depends on the circumstances. The thirty percent is a little bit higher than probably the twenty five percent that you probably see most. But I think it 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 is, it is very much in what we have been doing. And what we could be doing, because this is this is really our own policy. We don't have to follow anybody but something that we think is reasonable. And also, what is very important is that this does not tie us in any way. This just allow allows us to keep that as a reference point and beyond that. You see how how we we will like will spend it and below that we should be concerned. And in emergency circumstances, of course, we can dip into into the reserve. So that that. That kind of explains it. Some other municipalities also do kind of arrange. But but it then then it the the policy becomes a little more complicated. Some of the municipalities do it for the for all the fund balances and that's why. Some towns use twenty five, but it's for for not just for the fund balance, but other other funds. So so for for us in particular, I think we should, I I just put it together and and bring it to to you, to to all of you for. For consideration. I do see that the. Budget committee has 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 looked at it. I had no discussions with them, but I I I appreciate that they they they've in a way said that. It it looks good in their respect. So with that, I just leave it out for for others to comment and suggest changes.
Members of board?
Um, I, you know, I think it's something that we should consider. I think it's it's, I mean, I was at this training with with Victor. We've been to a couple of these trainings and. One of the things that was commented was that this is one of the keys that you want to have to help your. To help get a better bond rating. And I think considering the financial times we're going into, this is something that we should have done previously, and I think we should do it now.
Um, to get the better bond rating, though, is it that you have a policy in place or that you have the money in place? Because we've had the money in place.
Well, but it's I I I think one of the things they recommend that you have these policies because you're thinking about what to do with the money. It's not just the money, it's how you're managing your money.
So just by adopting this policy, you think it will help our bond rating?
I think it's one of the things we can, I think it's one of the, one of the things that the Controller Office sort of suggests that we that we do. You know. It's one of the recommendations that they make for the fiscal health.
But that doesn't necessarily, I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad recommendation, but it doesn't necessarily. Be something that Moody's is looking for. Uh, my concern, I have two concerns. My concerns is that thirty percent is pretty much the historic high. And that's pretty much the most that we've ever had and we're lucky to have it now. But I I think a more realistic is twenty five percent. And, you know, we are, we are going into. Stormy times. And. I I don't want to be in a position where if we have to. Use some of that to get by. And now we're under thirty percent. Say we're at twenty seven percent, we're at twenty six percent. Then, you know, we we feel this pressure to, you know, get it back up to thirty percent within two or three years. Which might be unrealistic because you don't know what the future holds. So I I think twenty five percent gives you more leeway. And and it gives you more, I mean, what in the controller stuff, they talk about fifteen percent or about two to three months. I mean, three months is twenty five percent. You figure it right now, it's three quarters of a year. It's a quarter of a year. Uh, so my concern is that the thirty percent is too high. And I I I think it's it's an unrealistic number. And also, you know, I would like to, you know, have more input from the staff on how, you know, they think it might affect us or not affect us. And that, you know, they have been juggling cats this past week. Trying to get everything in order and getting us a budget that now is very well under the cap. So that that's my thinking.
I think this is worth exploring as well, and I I'm just looking through my NICOM things. I I thought there was a. A point at which, and I thought it was thirty percent, at which if you have a general reserve at thirty percent or higher, it's an indication that perhaps you're overtaxing. And that you aren't budgeting well enough. And so I don't want to get to that point. Thirty percent does seem high to me. I I but this is, I mean. In principle, I like the idea of setting as a policy some goal that we would like to have so much in reserve. But I'd really like to hear from Augie someday when he's prepared to talk about it. What is the right number for the village of Maranick? Because I think it's very municipality. Specific. I'm not sure in the middle of an economic crisis, the likes of which we haven't seen in our lifetimes, we can. Use today's numbers to judge that. God, I hope this isn't the new normal, but I'd love to hear from from Augie when he can speak to this. About what what the right number should be. Those are my thoughts. Anyway, I'm done.
Okay, do you want to comment or not at this point?
I haven't had any chance to research this at all. No, I have no comment. It's my after research. I don't know what formula was used to calculate the thirty percent. The whole criteria used to set it. So I'm not really sure. I have to research a lot more before I can actually speak on it.
Jerry, do you have any comments?
No, because the truth is, up until three o'clock, three fifteen this afternoon, we were still working on the budget. And so we haven't had time to look at it. I mean. We haven't had time to to look at it to see what the the ramifications potentially are. If you do set a high limit of of thirty percent and you have a bad year one year. And does that mean that you're going to raise taxes the following year to achieve that thirty percent level? Raising taxes just to put into the fund balance. I'm not really sure if that makes sense.
I think the.
I don't know.
I'm sorry. I think what it is is a guide for the village to try and achieve. And then you have to look at the specifics and any, you know, it's a policy and it's not a, it's not a law. It is what we try to try and achieve. I've looked at what Victor has written. And I read the backup material. I've listened to what the budget committee had to say. Who endorsed the. And they've been talking about this now for months. I think it is a good goal to have. It's similar to what other municipalities have, to what I've been told.
Well, how do we, how do we know that, Dan? I I don't, I don't know. I haven't had time to do that research. I think the thirty percent number might just be an arbitrary number that the budget committee chose. I don't know if, and they're great at volunteering because they're the best at volunteering and doing the research. I don't think we did the research on this. See what municipalities of our size actually have as far as a fund balance policy. Or no, I haven't done it.
Or you want.
Jerry, what I'm concerned about is every year I finance most of the capital projects with our cash reserves. Anywhere between four to six million dollars. Is that financing of the capital projects now reducing? Our amounts that were going below. So I'm actually, I might be actually in violation of a policy. Uh huh. Do more debt financing in order not to use the cash. That's what I have to see for policy.
But I think that's a good thing to know. And then we take a look at the specifics. Because if there is a, you know, if it is a temporary thing. That's going to be replenished with a bond issue, then it's known. I think what this is, is a trigger. For people to look at and say, okay. If we are, if we're not going to meet it, why and what should we be doing? But the policy is to try and keep that and to keep to keep a level so that when. Something like this fiscal year happens and we have to fund. A significant amount out of the reserves, we have it there to do so. And then we have to figure out what happened and where, you know, where do we go from here? I think it, the 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 problem of setting it lower, in my opinion, is it gives more leeway. To, you know, and at that point, you know, who knows? Is it anything magical about a specific number? I'm not sure. But I think Victor's coming up with the number with the research he's done, and I've read the materials that he's provided. I think it's very sound. And I like it because what it does do is it sets it, it sets up an alarm system.
Can I just, Augie, you're saying as we as we fund capital projects, we would be violating the policy. Which would require us to bond more frequently, which would end up costing us money. Because we wouldn't be able to put in, put together a big bond package. We'd have to go out each individual time.
That's correct. That's what I've been, when I first read the policy, it's a great written policy, but my concern is. Most of our financing for capital projects is done with the cash reserves. And with that said, I'm afraid that we might, unless I research, I don't know definitively if it's right or wrong, I think we'll be in violation of that policy.
Yeah, I didn't even.
Either review anticipation notes or bond anticipation notes in advance. And be careful not to go into arbitrage laws because we're borrowing the money too far or too late to fund projects, right?
Our, the the documentation is for since two thousand and. Two thousand and fifteen to eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we were at thirty point seven percent.
Uh, but we dipped below that during.
Thirty one. We did, we did, well, right, but it's my understanding that the it's that when we. The reserve is as what's identified by the controller when the audit is done. So it's not a running tally. So the the number that we have, that's our unallocated reserves now, is a number from there, from the from the accountants. And it's a firm number. That that number doesn't change through, that the amount might change throughout the year, but the fund balance is what they say it was when they did the audit. I think that's, I think that's, that's when the trigger happens.
Right, so if let's just say we come to the audit and we're not at thirty percent, we're we're at. Twenty seven and a half percent.
But we don't get those numbers. We don't know when we're making decisions.
We're gonna get a number of what we have and then then it becomes. Oh, a a instruction. And then.
My question is, is it a running tally or is it the number that we get on the annual audit?
I don't know. You're right. I don't know that.
That's what I said. I don't know.
Could, I mean, can we?
Can I explain something so that we we make progress and move this? You know, the the thirty percent like has has the following origin. It's it's that comes right out of of our of our. The analysis that was presented to us in January by our by the manager. It indicates that we've been using, as you see here in the sign. We've been using six hundred this, we just, that last year, we were using six hundred today. If the budget passes. We use six hundred and some even amount every year at this time. So 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 one, you look at this, this this policy was written and I took the, I I figured the best of what I see sold out there. It it actually kicks in in two in two ways. One is to is to make sure is to know how much. You can appropriate at the time you do the budget. And at that point, you know, because that is, that is a, that is a cutoff date. The the assigned fund balance, they give it to us. So they gave it to us and now we have a number that we're gonna, we we look at, which is eleven point seven, right? And and there, so from there, we know that we can use certain amount. And we know also, that's my other concern, that we've been using over that amount. Last year. Seven hundred and sixty, the year before, the year before. So having the policy focuses on the moment you you make the the budget. And also, and and also forces the board to keep an eye on what are you adding on from capital surplus through the year. And actually, the policy doesn't force us to limit or has any penalty is for our own fiscal control and and not to have. All the difficulties that we've been having in the last few days trying to figure out where we are with the use of surplus. And actually, it's very clear that during the year you can use it. It's also very clear that you can dip below it. It doesn't have any penalties or any consequences. It's just keeping you that thirty percent because we've been, we we could be able with the with the budget that we have now. To keep it there. And and the other thing I want to say is, if you see, if you see the, if you've seen the article, the very important article in the New York Times over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. About the problem of of the society, American society and and the problem with cash flow. And how many families don't have more than two months to live on? Now, this is, I will, I don't want to live in a community that doesn't have more than four months. It can be three. And it doesn't sound arbitrary. It's arbitrary, but I think at this point, I prefer to be. As, you know, and I know we have, we have staff and we have the discipline to just keep and and this could have, we could do more and more research as much as we want, but we we should be setting. I I I'm clear that it has to be between thirty, twenty five and thirty percent, right? Thirty percent be be being what we can do at this point. Maybe we can review it. But we have to really be disciplined. I don't know what the future holds for this community with this. Governor with 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 what the federal government doesn't seem to be bailing out. The state government is not going to bail us. We have to be very careful to keep a reserve for three to four months. At least four months in the next year. If then the board decides that we have to dip in and maybe change this, but that's how, but what that was the whole. Purpose of 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 the thirty percent just being being that, being having these numbers. It doesn't have, it doesn't, this is not really rocket science, right? This is not rocket science.
Well.
Can be identified and we can continue, you know, analyzing this, but we need, we need to start this, the fiscal discipline of keeping an eye on both these numbers. Starting today. That's my point. Back to you.
Hello, will you say something?
I I was gonna say, I, of course, we should be keeping our eyes on these numbers always going forward. I'm worried about a policy that has unintended consequences. And until I hear from village staff what those consequences might be, I'm uncomfortable with adopting a policy. That's all.
And I I I think that thirty percent is our historic high and we shouldn't set it our historic high. Somewhere between twenty five and thirty, you know, if there's wiggle room there, we should wiggle a little bit. You know, we, this, this would put us in a situation where if we have a continued downturn. You know, and we we want to. Help our residents by using the surplus, we're gonna have people yelling at us, oh, you're violating your own policy. Look, you just have it a year and you're violating your own policy. I guarantee you that'll be happening. So why not build in a little wiggle room in this?
I think we shouldn't, I think we need to set policies that are strong and responsible and that we shouldn't violate them. I mean, I think we're really at the cusp of. A not great new normal and I think we, you know, we're we're lucky that we have enough revenues and we've, and we're not a financially stressed. Community, but I think that list from the Controller's office is going to grow quickly. I think we need to take steps to make sure we stay. With, we live within our means.
My 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 point is, is that if we limit ourselves to how much surplus we can use, it's gonna hurt our ability. To stay afloat if we have a real devastating couple of years. You know, I'm for this policy. I I want more input from our staff and I'd like to see it at twenty five percent and that's where I stand.
Well. I thank Victor for pulling this together. What I do, I thank him for taking the time to do this. I think we all do.
It's not going away. I mean, I'm just asking us to wait two weeks till our staff has time to look at it.
I do want to clarify one thing that is, this is not set in stone. Don't you, I think you don't understand the basic of it. It is, it is really a a policy not focused just on the thirty percent. But just to 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 have it as a reference and 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 the most important piece is what happens if you go above or below or when to use it? to have it as a reference, and 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 the most important piece is what happens if you go above or below or when to use it below? So for example, if we keep it at thirty, which we which we can afford now, then the policy actually authorizes us to go below to do certain things that are, for example, what 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 could happen in the in the in the foreseeable future, which is revenue shortfalls, emergency expenditures.
Yeah.
It'll just, we will have at least something in writing, our own policy, setting a framework. Now we have nothing. And yes, we can work for two weeks, but if we're gonna work for two years, let's just make sure we have something in two weeks. Because I think this is, again, this is not rocket science.
I think two weeks.
Rocket science.
I think two weeks is very fair to allow the staff to do the research and to allow, you know, first of all, the public to weigh in, who are watching this. And, you know, this is a big change, and I'm not saying it's a bad change. I think it's a good change. You know, I, you know, I, you know how I feel. You know, I I don't want to keep chewing my own cabbage. But I think good government to uh allow staff a chance to.
Absolutely. I I can't, I don't think we have, we we, I I was hoping and because, you know, Augie has been in, you know, his disposition for so many years. I thought he was gonna be able to 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 give us, give us additional. I thought this was not gonna gonna be, it sounds like a surprise. I haven't surprised anybody. This is kind of regular business. The fact is, actually, the surprise is that we don't have one. So of course, we'll we'll, I uh, I think they have want to be prudent. I I recognize that. We'll give them time. You know, all the work they've been doing, we work day by day. We're all in this together, as they say. So so of course, the two weeks, but I I think it's it's uh, the 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 budget committee saw it and they say it's okay, so let's let's uh get to it in in two weeks and nail this one. And also, by the way, the the committee, the budget committee recommended uh some other some other um ideas, so maybe we could follow those into 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 discussion for two weeks as they really relate, they relate and they're directly connected with the budget, and so they, we could, we we need to follow on those right away.
Well, let's let's nail one thing at a time. We, I I I think we tend to, we tend to lose ourselves.
Well, I I think Victor has a good idea, Tom, and I think that uh they're both interrelated uh and they follow hand in hand. So I, if we're gonna wait two weeks on uh this, we should put them both together and put them forward in two weeks.
And what are they?
The uh policy that Victor has recommended and the and the approaches that have been recommended, policies from the budget committee.
And what are they?
Well, the, on Friday night, the budget committees, they they met Thursday, I believe, and they sent recommendations about what we could be doing to continue to monitor the budget because, you know, the economic situation is different this week than it was three weeks ago, and certainly different than it was six weeks ago when the budget was delivered. So that's in the backup. And Mike, Tom, you were printed copy, right?
I I I, but my my point is this, I mean, I I I I understand the budget committee wants to monitor budget, and yeah, I I think we do that, and we have staff that does that constantly. So, you know, this is, I I I don't, I mean, I I appreciate their concern, but let's not make it sound like it's not happening.
I I'm not saying it's not happening, but you know, it's it's the, it's the obligation of the board of trustees more than the staff to monitor the budget. That's that. And.
It's not fit.
And what I'm, what I'm suggesting is the, that, you know, we made a lot of cuts, but we may need to make more cuts. And this is gonna be a year where everybody has to monitor more carefully. We just, we made projections in February and March that aren't gonna be realized, and we don't know what other projections are gonna change. So I think we all have to work together to make sure we are watching every penny come in and watching every penny go out, and hopefully more pennies are gonna come in than go out.
That's the goal. Okay. Put it on a separate item on a budget, because you can't just, you know, separate it on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll set both for two weeks from now.
For the work session. All right, let's get back to the agenda. All right. You wanna leave, you really, let's say six thirty. We gonna get anywhere, dogs and trees?
Um, I think, but I can, I'm thinking about this, and those are both committees I work with. I think the dog needs to, I think when we do, when we discuss the dogs, I think we should do it in work session, but allow some public comment. Think about doing it that way, because there are people who've made some comments. And I, so I think I'd like to consider maybe modifying our rules as we occasionally do for that discussion. Um, and I think in terms of the tree, I had an opportunity to look at it. I don't know if everybody else has. A lot of changes were made by tree committee and by staff and by the attorneys. Um, and I think, I think that if we, if we could all have time to really talk about it for maybe ten minutes two weeks from now, we might be able to get a draft law that we could consider once we can all get together in public and have public hearings. So I'd push, put them both off for a couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, by our, we talked about tree law, amendment to procurement policy, not to exceed costs for professional service agreements. So will this go into every procurement?
Items that come to the board, like we did tonight, we could potentially include a not to exceed number to control costs a little bit more.
So, but on contracts where you don't come to the board, will you put a non-to-exceed number on that?
Well, the the number is typically the, you're right, I mean, the number is typically the contract amount. That's the one I don't want to exceed.
The the one thing that seems to be lacking is some of the recommendations from the budget committee on this, or did I miss that? In terms of if they're not, if they're not being bid, what has to be sent to them so that everybody knows what it is they're proposing?
I don't understand what you're saying.
I don't understand it either.
Well, for instance, we had the fence, the the example that was used was the fence on Taylor's Lane, where uh we didn't do a quote RFP, but we did get three quotes. And they varied widely, and the issue became, you know, maybe they were bidding on different things. And so that we suggested that rather than RFP, there be a one-page outline of what it is that was anticipated to be undertaken so that anybody responding to that had a guidance of what they had to provide for whatever price they were proposing. And that doesn't seem to be in there. Unless I missed it. Quite lengthy.
Penny, you want to say something?
Yeah, uh, what you're describing is an RFQ. So RFQ is just like a, you could just do a bunch of bullet points, exactly what you're saying, and just put that out. It's the same thing. It's just different formalities, that's all.
Well, it was done for, so that you could do different amounts and not have to go through a lengthy RFP process and can do it on a much faster basis for so, something that was relatively small. But the issue is to understand what, so there's a clear understanding between what the village is expecting and what people are suggesting that they will do.
And I think you're talking about the difference between a process and what process we would initiate or we would do internally with that, with those bids and what a policy would be. I don't know if the process.
The policy would be that we would undertake that internal RFQ, if you will. That that's the difference. We we don't have that in there, and I think that's one part of what we should be including. Well, the RF, the procurement policy does allow for the receipt of verbal quotes, so. That's not the issue, Dan. It it is an issue when you're talking about uh public works contracts, which is what you get quotes for, which the Friends Project you described would be considered a public works contract, not a professional services agreement. So they are two different items. You would need to uh, you need to uh get rid of any verbal quotes that you have received. I I wasn't, I I, I don't want to take the time really to go through this in depth, but budget committee went through this in depth at length, and the difference between personal service contracts, non-personal RFQs, RFPs, et cetera, and formulated an approach that I thought, you know, was a sound approach so that we know what we, that we think we know what we're getting, but those who are responding are on the same page, which does not have to be a formal RFP process. And we came up, I know they came up with language, you know, to try and weave through the issue so it would not be deemed a RFP, but would give better control and insight. Yes, I think. Suggesting that that is what should be included so that we don't have any misunderstanding. Well, I know that uh maybe four or five months back, Jerry spoke with the department heads. I give him, I begin him some uh forums I had used in the past to solicit quotes. I think he should be something like that to the department heads and recommended that they use those types of things when getting quotes for various projects.
That is correct.
But I know the budget committee came up with actually a form of a form process to do so. I don't have that in front of me, but I, you know.
All right, well.
I believe, Jerry, you were there at the at the meeting.
I was there, yeah. I was there. It's true. I came up with a form where the budget committee discussed, and uh it's not on here, though. Um, the reason this is on is because trustee Tofora and I had a conversation about a discrepancy that we saw in the policy and led to a discussion where, you know, I would be, I would be presenting to the board of trustees something like we did this evening with a do not exceed um amount. That's really why this is on here. Um, and I'm sorry, we probably missed it. We should have had that additional information from the, from the uh budget committee, but like I said, we've been focused on the budget and nothing else for.
I understand that. I'm not, not not accusing anybody. I'm just simply saying that, you know, that's why we have other eyes that look at things and try and, you know, make it better. So I think what we should do is put, find a way to put that in there, and then I think it would work.
Well, hold on. Why don't we deal with what's in front of us now and then bring that up again, the the, what the budget committee wants, because that's not what's in front of us now.
But that's the same, it's the same thing as Victor's proposal, that we postponed for two weeks. You have information that's not in front of you that, you know, that is relevant to the topic being discussed. And what's the difference if you do it now in two weeks?
Because I want to get this done now, and I haven't seen what the budget committee wanted.
Okay.
Okay, and it's not in front of me, and it's not on the agenda, and it's not in the backup.
It's in the issue of the policy of what's been been presented to us. And that's the issue, Tom.
Why don't we deal with the policy that's presented to us?
And that's what I'm dealing, and I think there is a mission that needs to be added, that's up to everybody else and what they want to do.
That's fine.
So I think is what Dan, what Dan's proposing is to, in addition to what we have before us tonight, there's another modification, and we should do them both in two weeks?
Yes.
As opposed to doing, having it. Victor, is did that?
It isn't, I haven't, I haven't seen it, so it's not clear to me exactly. I I think I understood. I mean, that's what Dan was saying, but I I don't, I don't know exactly. I don't, I wouldn't have an objection. Actually, I do have a comment on on what's before us, if I may now, which is, yeah, the the the, let me just share my screen. This is, this is the language that's proposed, old village professional. Shall contain enough to exceed, so is it everybody in the screen can see it, right? Yes? Yes, can you see it? Right?
Yep, I see it.
Okay, okay. Then my my my, my other, my my question is, Jerry, the contract that we were looking at a little while ago was like six thousand.
Yep.
The the, the actually, the, even with this change, the policy still doesn't, it's not clear what is, what is the threshold to bring it to the board? It 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 only indicates that if, that in order to estimate if it exceeds ten thousand, that we, that we will, the, then we'll do an RFP, and it does mention the board of trustees in the paragraph. But my, I I I have seen in the last three years that those contract, services contracts, like around five, beyond five, come to us. Is that, is that a reasonable number? Five thousand dollars? Or is it too slow?
So um, it's it's whatever number you feel comfortable with. It it makes no difference to me. It's just the, it's just a faster method of conducting business. Uh, if you set a limit and that limit is um something that I don't have to bring to the board. But if you want me to bring, it it's just, it's a, it's a policy decision. It's what you are comfortable with.
It it has been around, as as you just brought one for about six thousand. So of course, below that is 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 it's no, it's not a problem. But what I, what I want to clarify is 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 that amount, if it's five or if it's ten. Uh, of course, if it's an emergency like now, you can go ahead. You can go ahead. So this is not really limiting you. This is just giving you a reference in in the normal course of course of business. Because what I want to insert, my my my, my addition would be to insert here all village professional service contracts, and then add estimated not to exceed five thousand in a fiscal year shall be approved by the board of trustees and shall contain and not to exceed total unless otherwise approved by the board of trustees. That would be my recommendation. I just don't want to tie your hands too much. I think the five sounds reasonable, but I don't want to, I don't want to go beyond, because you see the board, this this policy is not clear. It's not clear. It doesn't give you that amount.
Hey, Victor, I, the res, I I need help. The resolution that I'm looking for on this, on this issue is on, is page one fifteen. You're not reading from a resolution, are you?
I'm reading for the policy itself.
Right, but but the resolution is silent on that issue.
Resolution is referring that it will be a, that will, that will incorporate whatever change is highlighted here. I I I don't have it in front of me, but that's how I read the resolution.
I mean, I'm, I don't see that incorporates anything.
It says not to exceed. The village, it said, it attaches the procurement policy as amended. It says, resolve the village of the Maranic Board of Trustees that the beard, those who are not board of trustees procurement policy attach here too and may be a part of. So so when you, when you incorporate this language, then our our policy would be changed to incorporate the underlying language. I think it's a good idea. It's just to to make.
I see, yeah, I I see you. Yep, yep.
You make sure that now that we're clarifying that, we clarify the threshold. It's actually, it it gets, it it is very murky, even if you go back.
What's the threshold now?
The threshold now, it's kind of undefined.
Yeah.
Up here, if you go back.
Yeah, right there.
At some point, this was not the case, but at some point, services contract was attached to public works. Doesn't really make a sense. So in that, you would not need a contract only until you have over thirty-five thousand dollars, and that is really not, not, not proper, I think. That has not been the norm.
So service should come out?
Service should come out. This is just about public work contracts, which have their own world under general municipal law, and
Right.
And they they are their own animal, and of course, the animal, you have, you have purchase of goods, public works, and and different, the other animal is is services, which, which I I think should have the ten or five thousand dollar threshold. And then, and then the key is, the key issue is whether you do an RFP beyond ten, which is clear in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the policy. So that is, that is what I, what would clarify. We if we insert the threshold, then I think the policy would be, would be, would be not perfect, because there's always room for more clarification, but at least it will be, it will be, it will be uh clear.
Whatever you think, whatever you think, I I only have one year experience in the village. So whatever you think it would be, I, it's, it's a policy. I live within the policy set by the board, whatever you decide. You know, I'm not gonna come to you for a hundred dollar item that I need to uh, to to procure, but, you know, there are service contracts. If if five thousand dollars is comfortable, if ten thousand dollars is comfortable, whatever, whatever it is. And then it would be, you know, brought to the board as a do not, as a not to exceed. So whatever you want it to be, and and that doesn't. So whatever you want it to be. And, and that doesn't have to be a decision for tonight, but whatever you want it to be.
Well, then leave, let's leave the two things for two weeks from now.
Yeah.
And you, you'll recommend to us, you can talk to Augie and tell us if 5,000 is too little, then we, then we'll, then we'll take it to 10 or consider the, the pros and cons. I think probably that, that's a good, that's a good thing. And actually, since we're here, let me do something more. Now that we're talking about emergency, are you, does the emergency purchases are subject to the village manager's approval?
Emergency purchases?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think that language should go here because I've seen it in other policies. It says after the full stop, it says all emergency purchases are subject to the prior approval of the village manager.
Okay.
So I, I suggest that and then think about it if it, and bring it up in two weeks if everybody's fine with that.
Does anybody know the section? Does anybody know which section?
It's at the end. I can't remember what section it is.
B.
Sorry.
B. It's on the screen right there.
It's on page 112 of the PDF and it's section 9B.
Right.
9B like Boyd.
Yeah, I think there was a process laid forth in General Municipal 103. We can mimic what it says there here a little bit also.
Don't go, I, I've, I've looked at it. It doesn't work.
Okay.
This is from Nightcom, Panama Maranic. I just was curious about what was happening. So, so they, they have just that, that line. Our, our, our policy is similar to town.
Yeah.
Can I, but the, the only caveat I have about that is the police department might need emergency purchases on a an expedited basis, you know, God forbid something happens on a weekend or at night. So we might have an exemption for the police chief. And I don't think it happens that often, but I can see the instance where it might happen.
Yep.
So maybe we can do that in two weeks.
Okay.
That certainly could happen. Yeah, I can make those changes tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so then, so let's try and whip one of these up.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned about the item that Greg is attending our meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Greg Cutler is, is attending our meeting to discuss about a grant opportunity. I just want to make sure that if he needs to discuss it, we discuss it so that we're not missing a deadline because then I would really.
When we have grant opportunity, grant funding opportunity for seawall rehabilitation.
Thanks.
Trying to make the seawall go to rehab.
And, and let's start right there to see if this is time sensitive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is NIFWIF application. The deadline is June 1st, so we kind of need an idea of if the board wants us to pursue this grant or not, considering the fiscal status of the village right now. So, so yes, we would need some kind of guidance tonight, so we don't get too far ahead of ourselves working on an application that's due shortly.
I'm for it. What about the rest of you folks?
Thank you, Greg. Move on.
Move on it? Okay. Okay, so I think the matter of, the question was really about scale. So the LWRP wants us to do this in kind of segments to repair the wall. I think it's actually probably better to do it as one planning project. So we would look at this. This would be for planning, funding and implementate and design fundings. So it would, I, in my view, I think we would want to apply for, for the whole seawall in the, the whole length of the West Basin. At least for the planning case, it doesn't mean the construction wouldn't happen in one fell swoop. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention and get some guidance on that.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
It probably would make the grant application even look better.
Okay, I guess that's, that's all I need. Thank you.
And Greg, do you remember if Allison said anything about the, the match? Because I don't remember if there's a match on this.
I believe it's 50/50, but I can confirm.
Okay.
Dan, do you remember?
I, I think it's 50/50 for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation.
But the interesting thing is the CFA grants will be coming up and, and obviously we don't know what money is going to be left that the state will be giving out to each municipality, but we could use the state grant funding if this gets far enough along to, to help with the NIFWIF match. So there's an opportunity to kind of double up on grants as this moves forward. So we'll see.
It's kind of ironic because this was built at a time of huge financial stress in our country.
Yeah. There was a president who cared, cared about people and tried to put them to work.
He, but he did it when he was governor here. It was a state project, but.
You know, just on that, I mean, as an aside to nothing, my father was in the first New York City Public School class for malnourished children. And it was started when Franklin Roosevelt was governor of New York, 1933, Depression.
Wow.
My father used to always say that Franklin Roosevelt saved his life.
Well, that was, I mean, the seawall was built when he was governor. It was like the precursor to the WPA. He started a project here, in New York State.
Where is he when we need him? Um, okay.
Back in with the spirits.
We, we, we got that done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Fund balance policy we got done. Harbor Island, no, no, we, we, judicial backup additional staff. Review from Justice Court for additional staff.
I don't think we need to deal with that right now.
All right, that's fine. Amendment to procure policies. Okay, we did that. We're going to leave dogs and trees, dogs and trees. I love that together. Harbor Island tennis. Can we talk about that here? The RFP. Is the RFP ready, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
So all we need to do is pull the trigger on it?
Pull the trigger.
Well, does it, I, I just want to know if it makes sense to do this with sport time having radically changed their position with respect to an extension. I mean, my thought is that a bird in hand is better than a risky and drawn out RFP process if we've gotten what we asked for from the negotiations. If they're, if they've, you know, if they're offering what we think they're offering.
What do you guys think?
I think that's something that you wanted to discuss in advisory council.
All right, I'll bring a motion that we go into advisory council.
Yes, we could have an advisory council, but I want to ask Mr. Spalzino.
Yes, I'm here.
The the information that we got today, is that an advice account or is that executive session?
There are issues that, there are issues that you may want to ask me questions about. And that would be an advice of counsel.
Okay, then I make a motion that we go into an advisory council.
Second.
Augie call please.
Tessie Lucas?
Yes.
Winship?
Yes.
Tetjes?
Yes.
Chris Moore?
Yes.
Pam Murphy?
Hi. Okay, let's use the phone number that we had before.
Can we?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be, one second.
Cliff, start muting.
Welcome and thank you for choosing Free Conference.
Does anyone have sound?
I do.
Hello? Yeah.
Victor, can you take a look at the resolution that I sent to everyone? I made the changes.
I just got it back to you.
Are there other changes?
No, I just put it in the right place, which is
Okay.
goes chronologically, so I put it down and you just take a look.
I will do that and I'll send it back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Ed. Way to go. You want a flowbee? I was thinking I'll buy one. Is everybody on?
Yeah. I need to get more water.
Okay.
I'll be back.
Wait a few. One second, folks. Okay, I'm gonna try and do this online. Paper cut.
Okay, go ahead. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Mamarone Board of Trustees meeting for April 27th, 2020. I don't have to tell anybody about the emergency exits. Please join me in Hi.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
Republic for which it stands.
One nation
Under God
Indivisible
Liberty
Justice
For all.
Thank you. First, I need a motion to end the work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is communication to the board one. Before you enter the audience.
We have one hand raised by Glenn. One second.
All right, Glenn, you're up. Remember Glenn, there's a suggested time limit of five minutes, please.
Cliff, allow Glenn to speak.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Glenn.
Okay, number one. With sadness, I'd like to announce the death of Frank Dominelli, who passed away this week. Complications with old age, basically. He was 80 years a resident here of the Village of Mamarone. He was a school custodian in the Mamarone School System and he was the longtime crossing guard over at the Homic School. Was also an auxiliary police officer. And at one time ran a small business where he and his father-in-law used to do all the commercial windows here in the Village of Mamarone. He's survived by his wife Anne of 60 years. Daughters Debbie and Deana and son Frankie. And just a little note, in his day, he was actually an Arthur Murray dance instructor.
Oh, wow.
Passing of a very long time. He'd been my neighbor for my entire life and it's sad with his passing.
Thank you for that, Glenn.
Okay, a couple of things. Fund balance policy that you were discussing in the work session. Number one, when they calculate the percentage, they should only be calculating the unassigned fund balance against your budget. That should be the percentage. Yeah, you have 13 or something, you had 13 plus in the fund balance, but only about 11 of it was actually unassigned. To address Augie's problem, you should add with the unassigned fund balance, revenue recovery by bonding. Therefore, if you do go out and spend money that you are going to recover in bonding, if you put that as a second line and add those two together, that would actually give you your true fund balance.
Thank you.
Um. We're gonna talk about the budget. You actually just went to executive session. Currently in the budget, you have $166,000 for tennis. If you are planning to put the tennis out to bid, that has to be changed. Or if you're going into a new agreement with SportsTime, whatever that agreement is, you're gonna have to let them know to make whatever adjustment you have to do in the budget on that subject.
Okay.
Okay, that is it for now. When we get to the budget, we'll have more fun. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay, I'm gonna do this via the computer tonight. Public hearing on fiscal year 2020 tentative budget.
Assistant Augie, was there any other hand up?
Only whatever's posted online.
No, 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 no. Was there any for communication to the board? Was there any other hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did say handout. Yes, Doreen Rooney. Doreen?
She's muted.
You gotta, she's, her mic's off or something.
Yeah, it says talking permitted, but her mic is, there we go.
Doreen?
Hello?
Doreen, are you there? Okay. All right. Going back to what we've got on.
One more hand is up.
Who else is up?
Stuart.
Can I put Stuart on?
Unmute.
Go ahead, Stuart. But Stuart, I can't hear you.
Hey?
I can't hear you.
Hey?
We can't hear you, Stuart. Are you muted or?
I, I am unmuted.
There you go.
All right. All right. Until somebody learns I use the mic.
Cliff needs to give them all lessons, clearly.
Because that's Cliff's job.
No, not Cliff, Glenn, Glenn.
All right.
I, I hear him faintly, but it's like he's in a tin can.
I can't hear anything. His mic is off now. Right, this is not working.
Doreen.
All right. We've got a public hearing on fiscal year 2020, 2021 tentative budget. Need a motion to open this.
So moved. Second.
Call roll. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchell?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, we, there's no need to go through this, right, because we have a final one. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. I move to close the public hearing on the 2020, 2021 tentative budget. So we can get to the final one.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchell?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, pardon me, proposal to exceed the tax cap for fiscal year 2020, 2021. For the hard work of our staff and the board, we have well below the tax cap. So I need a motion to open this.
So moved. Second.
Second. Call roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchell?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, since there's no need for this, unless somebody has the burning desire to go over the cap, I would entertain a motion to close this.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchell?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, now if we take no action, it dies on its own.
Yes.
I would like to have a vote on it.
They make a motion?
I moved it, I moved the motion.
The motion to what? Accept or reject?
It says to allow the village to exceed the cap for the fiscal year.
You're making a motion to allow those to exceed. Okay, anybody want a second?
Yeah, and I'll let you know that I'll be voting against it, but I think it should be on the record that way.
Anybody want a second? Okay, there's no second. It dies its own death. Public hearing on fiscal year 2020, 2021, final budget. Need a motion to open this.
So moved.
I'll second. Augustino.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchell?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Village manager, you want to walk us through your budget? Jerry, can't hear you. You're muted. All right, go ahead, Jerry. Take it from the top.
So what we've been doing the past couple of weeks is going over every line, talk to every department head, look at every potential savings, put in place some of the things that we've initiated several months ago in regards to preparing for this budget, including getting alternate quotes for some of the things that have always been fixed in our budget. So the reality is that there have been times when the Board of Trustees has, has, has provided directives to me and to the staff. So the Board of Trustees asked us to cut one to $2 million. We've actually cut over 2.5 million out of this budget. The Board of Trustees asked us to try to avoid layoffs and we have. They've asked us to focus on the order of consent and the deadline and making that priority number one. And as everyone can see, it is priority number one. The Board of Trustees several months ago, in fact, maybe more than half a year ago, asked us to look at reducing insurance rates. And tonight's budget includes $370,000 increase, decrease, sorry, in general liability and workers' comp insurance costs from the tentative budget. And that's a huge savings and that's what helps us make our numbers. And finally, as always, the trustees asked us to make sure that we maintain all the essential services. And, and we do. We do have a graphic. If Augie can share it, if he has it, if he can pull it up. Augie, it's that page that you provided, that you sent to my printer earlier today. If you can pop that up. Just make it a little smaller so it all fits in. And scroll up. So what we have is, we introduced the tentative budget at $40,43,585 this evening. We're asking the board to consider a budget of $37,513,856. That is a $201,000 decrease from last year's budget. It also brings us down to where our revenue, so that's where the $2.53 million is coming from. Our revenue, we're forecasting revenue decreases of $1.86 million. So we originally forecasted, other than real estate taxes, $12,571. And we're down to $10,710 right now. We're typically use 600,000 in fund balance. We're asking for that consideration again. But what it really does, if Augie, you can scroll up just a little bit. It puts us $277,715 below the cap. Making the tax levy increase 1.32%. And in fact, it's actually increasing taxes for the village 0.18%. So it's as close to a 0% tax increase as we could get. The reality is that couldn't have been done without, without the board and without the staff. Because you know, I've said it before, I like to take the directives, you tell us what you want and we'll try to make that happen. That $201,000 decrease from the 1920 budget is, we were able to achieve that even while absorbing the $450,000 in pension and health cost increases that we had to absorb into this budget. Everyone knows that I try to lead by example. What we're gonna need to look is, we're gonna need to look at, at how we're going to deliver services to the public in the future. Department heads will need to be more responsible and have more responsibility because many of the positions that we asked for in the tentative budget will not happen, will go unfilled. Budget dollars are missing for needed supplies and other items that we've relied on in the past to be able to deliver services to community. So we have to come up with creative solutions. There's no, there's no way around it. We don't sell a product, we don't make a product, we just deliver services to the residents. And we, we deliver services that people are accustomed to. So that's why this is, is really a challenge. We have to see and do things in a different light. And, and we'll have to make the small changes that everyone will see. And I'm sure, hopefully, when everyone's forgotten about the pandemic and everyone's forgotten about the quarantine and our pause that we're in. You know, we're gonna see less flowers in the parks and on the avenue. A lot less than we did last year. We're gonna see a lot of programs that are gonna be cut. And that's just the consequence of the fact that we're in very difficult times. We're also going to see potentially slower response times from administrative staff to be able to do things. We had a budget that we presented that we wanted to make sure that we continue to increase and achieve more as far as providing services to the board, but we can't do that. In fact, now we've added a lot more onto our plate. We, we need to look at things very differently. So like I said, I try to lead by example. This year, I'll be managing the engineer's office functions for the entire year practically. Mr. Sarnoff will take on a bigger role in the building department due to the reduction in full-time staff in that department. The clerk treasurer's staff will have to provide monthly detailed revenue and appropriation analysis to the Board of Trustees without additional staff to be able to do that. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to do that because I know that's, that's what you expect. Park staff will be down to employees, to full-time employees. So then DPW will have to kick in and help them out from time to time. The fire department, as everyone knows, has deferred a significant amount of expenses into the next budget year. And I'm hoping, and I know that we can ask our PEOs to be able to handle more code enforcement issues. We always have an issue with the amount of code enforcement requests that we get. And we understand that it's all based on the quality of life that people expect. So everyone has to kick in. One thing that the recreation staff will be doing for us is that they'll be cross-trained in all departments. They'll be trained in the clerk treasurer's office, the building department, and the manager's office to help us fill in those unfilled positions that we have. to help us fill in those unfilled positions that we have in this budget. Planning will have to change the process with our land use boards. Uh, there may be a a change in the way we staff land use boards, and I just need everyone to to accept the fact that, you know, we're stepping up to the plate with a budget that is going to make a lot of sacrifices. We just need all of our residents and our board members uh to understand that austerity ends up being the new normal for us now. Um, and I wish it was different, but this is, this is our reality. The only graphic that could basically display um where we are is what's on the screen. I don't know if the Board needs additional, uh but we have this long-running list of all the cuts and all the uh revenue reductions that we're anticipating. If that's of value to you, we could put that up, but I'm pretty sure that you've seen it.
We've seen it.
Several times over the past two weeks.
I mean, we've seen it, and it's in the, it's in the backup.
Mm-hmm.
On the agenda, under.
Yep. Basically, that's my, that's my summary, Mayor. That's um, that's where we are.
It's been a mouthful. I I think one of the important things that you said that uh to be remembered, you know, people always say, well, why don't we run it like a business? Well, you know what? Uh, if you're a business and you're not doing good, you know what you do? Declare bankruptcy, move on, you start another business. We can't declare bankruptcy, you know, we got to muddle through. Uh, we have to provide services. What saddens me about the budget, and I think everybody's done an excellent job, and I'm making no complaints, but what saddens me is that the community was on an upward trajectory.
Yep.
Uh, services were improving. It it was something that you could see walking around this community, uh the esprit de corps of the staff was improving. And I don't think we're going to lose that, but I think we might lose the upward trajectory, we might plateau uh for a while, uh but we will come back. But you know, uh, you know, the the additions that you had originally, you know, so for folks who are watching at home, maybe don't know the process, you know, uh, we we got the original budget on uh, I think it was March thirteenth, right? We get it early. And it was a tax cap compliant budget, it was under the tax cap, and there were going to be a lot of improvements, a lot of uh new initiatives in this community. And then, you know, the bottom just got pulled out of the tub. And uh, you you know, the the staff especially, you know, did a Herculean job making these cuts and uh making the changes that uh you know, helped our taxpayers, you know, you you made up over two million dollars as a very small tax increase. And uh, you know, we kept our vital staff working, and I, and I appreciate that, Bill. So, you know, I I I'd be happy to support this budget, you know, this budget allows for all the vital services, uh the health, safety, and welfare of the community will be well taken care of. But as you said, uh people are going to have to uh get used to less flowers and less frills.
Yeah.
For the time being, you know, we will, this will end.
Yep.
We will still be on a firm financial footing when this ends. But uh, I just want to thank you and the staff and my colleagues for working so hard on this.
Thank you.
One comment here is Victor. Uh, just, uh, I think it would be, it would be important to explain to anybody watching or for the record in the future, how, you know, what we're approving today. Essentially, this is the summary, but in the backup, and I I think I should not be the one. Explain that there are two schedules in the back. This, just explain so anybody can understand this, because we have the tentative budget, and we have this amendments, how is, how does it all pull together, that so that it's clear what we're doing now, and there's kind of no questions that that distance, this wasn't clear. So, and I know we we can probably don't want to get to the details that you were mentioning, but but at least indicate how all the pieces come, come together and can be interpreted. If you could help us, Jerry or Augie, however you want to do it.
I I want to understand, I want to understand what you're asking. It, are you asking um in the backup to explain what we have or from the backup or or?
Essentially, well, the, no, the 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 support for this, because we have, there's a tentative budget that's posted.
Yeah.
People may have seen it or not, but then we've made changes, and those are the schedules in the back, so we're just going to explain how how it is clear that we know what's fat, what we're passing today.
Yeah, so Augie, can you pull up the um, the master list?
Or revenue and appropriate, or appropriations?
Revenue and appropriation, if you have it together.
I, do you, I, one at a time, I could.
Okay. Let's go with, let's go with the revenue first. So, this is our list of revenue, our account numbers are on the left-hand side, and what we did was, we looked at every item uh in revenue, whether we could, whether we need to decrease, decrease it based in, based on our our you know, based on on the situation that we're in, or if we could leave it uh alone. Um, so each line has um, I'm trying to come up with a term, each line has a projection of what we believe based on on information, and and I can tell you, if I can just go to um sales tax, sales tax, we were told um by the um, by the county um that we should probably anticipate going back to last year's uh anticipated uh sales tax plus the one percent increase. Um, we budgeted in the tentative budget, three point seven million dollars that we anticipated receiving from sales tax. We reduced that five hundred thousand dollars based on what the county uh provided, and then today we confirmed it. That's a fourteen percent decrease. Uh, if you looked at the budget document that I provided earlier today from the uh from the the governor, the governor projects sales tax to be decreased by fifteen percent. So we're not off, we're we're right in line with what the county has asked us to do, and also um, what the uh governor is, what the government, you know, the governor's budget director, uh Mohica is trying to uh, is trying to come up with. These are educated guesses, Victor, these are, these are guesses that we try to analyze and take a look at, and so this revenue projection is all itemized in this document here. Are there any specific questions based on this document that you want to?
That's great. Go go to the bottom and then go to the other one. That'll be perfect. That is exactly what what people really understand what was happening. Good. Perfect.
The bottom, the bottom, um, we anticipated um non, non-real estate tax revenue at twelve million, five seventy-one. Um, based on the analysis line by line and discussing every item, we believe that we're probably realize one point eight-six million dollars less uh than what we put into the budget and what we had in our projections. Probably now, you know, a month, a month and a half ago. Um, so now that's down to ten million, seven-ten. Um, this is just non-real estate tax. Revenue, real estate tax is, of course, you know, something that um people have to pay. Um, and that's why we tried to minimize the tax rate and the tax um levy increase as much as possible because we understand that it's a difficult time for everyone. Oh, you bring up the other one, please? So this one here shows a lot more, um, but what this is, is a partial list of all of the items that typically uh the the village uh budgets for. This list here, uh that's before you, are items that are going to be adjusted down uh and or deferred. Um, and as we go, if you could just go to the manager's section, I can explain a little bit about, um, I had anticipated bringing in an administrative intern um sometime in March of twenty twenty-one. Um, I removed that from the budget. We did have two interns that we were going to do a tree inventory, that was also removed. Uh, we'll just hopefully do that in 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 the next budget year. Um, where we decreased some discretionary items like automotive repair, and we just hope that, you know, we have a good, a good a good year with that. In addition to that, we hope that uh we don't have as many labor issues as we've been realizing and and anticipate um a reduction there of forty-one thousand dollars. And then we have a service uh that we had, we were going to implement that with the newer seller uh plan. Um, I still want to uh look into um having that kind of connectivity and a platform where people can respond respond and and provide information such as potholes and signs that are down, but um it it's it's a frill, and and we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to do that, so hopefully we will um, we'll defer that into in the following budget year. Those are the items, that's how we looked at it. Every department was asked to take a look at it. Uh, the police department came in with a very tight budget. Uh, the police department had um basically a a zero percent increase in their budget, but what we tried to do is we tried to look at other areas where we could save in the police department. So um what the Board um and and the staff discussed was taking the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that would be potentially, that would typically be paid out of uh operating expenses in the operating budget, and then um uh purchasing those vehicles which are are needed vehicles, but also um bonding for those vehicles so that we could pay them off over a period of time, instead of paying off for one year, we potentially have the ability to pay them off in five years or less. So that just defers a little bit, and it just eases up the amount of uh, um, the amount of spending that we have to do. Uh, those are the items that we looked at. We looked at everything that we could do to um build in the two point five million dollar reduction um in in the expenses uh from the, from the budget that we provided to the Board on the thirteenth. And so is that number there, right? So we hadn't anticipated this. We had anticipated spending forty point zero four-three million dollars. Um, now we're at uh thirty-seven point five-one-three million dollars. And and I do want to point out again, I know I said it once or twice, but that is two hundred thousand dollars less than the current year budget that we're in right now with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional costs in pension and and medical costs, which are really not negotiable when it comes to um having, having the the labor contracts that we have. So it's a very difficult situation, um and we have to try to make the the best of that, and and I believe that all of the department heads uh and and Augie and Laura and Dan and Jonathan and and everyone in Augie's office really kicked in um to help out, and and I thought it was, I thought I was going to get a lot of pushback, I really did, but um, I I, it was, it was fantastic. And I'm just sad that we had to do it, but it was fantastic working with everyone as they understood the position that we're in, and they understood the directives from the Board, which were very important to me.
Thank you.
Okay.
There's a couple of people with their hands up. Let's go to Stuart, see if he's got his technical difficulties.
Stuart?
Stuart? Hello? No.
I can't hear him.
It's very muffled.
No. All right, Franklin.
Cliff, you're going to put Glenn on?
Are you gentlemen and ladies? Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, number one, just a message to Stuart, he can uh type in his questions if he wants. Um, looking at the budget, uh very, very very, very tentative with 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 the income numbers, but they are what they are. Uh, bonding the police cars is a horrible idea. They used to do that when I was on the Budget Committee twelve years ago. Uh, the way we use our police cars is we buy three police cars every single year. They're then put online and used twenty-four hours a day for two years, and then used as a spare car and sold five to six, seven years after their use is up for anywhere, you know, six thousand, four thousand, whatever the market covers. If you bond those for any significant period of time, you actually have less value in the police, it, the value of the police car is less than what you would be paying after year one. And the next year, you just have the police cars coming up again. I would rather that with some of the supplies and stuff, instead of six hundred thousand dollars out of the uh rainy fund, take a million dollars out of the rainy fund, pay for the cars, have a little bit uh increase your um your backup a little bit, you know, because quite frankly, if we need supplies, we need supplies. It doesn't make any sense to have personnel if they don't have the supplies they need to actually physically do their jobs. Uh, the other one is, I was looking at fines and forfeitures, including bail. Uh, be aware that New York State changed their policy on bail. So whatever money that you would be getting from bail forfeiture, even after the crisis is over, no longer is going to exist because virtually all the cases that would be handled in our village court that did involve bail uh will no longer involve bail. That's uh, that's the policy uh change that New York State made, or the law change New York State made last year on bails for misdemeanors and such. In almost all cases that our courts would handle, there is no bail. Uh, the, what we actually need to do is, we need to uh actually get the numbers, if you don't have them, of how many tickets that we currently still have outstanding for the last three months for um parking and what we anticipate that we're still going to get um back from New York State for moving violations. That way, you have a better idea of what your income is because quite frankly, I think that line is probably over by a couple of hundred thousand dollars at the says, you you're gonna, you're gonna need to keep a running tally. And maybe what you do is you have an amnesty on on the fines for parking tickets and see if you can derive money, send out the notices to everybody who got a ticket in the last year and a half and hasn't paid it. Want an amnesty, pay it now before July fifteenth, waive your fine, and see if you can generate more money that way. But you're going to have to really, you know, look at a use, but but bonding the uh, the uh, the the uh the um cars, I think, is just ridiculous that they are literally a disposable item that after two years, eighty percent of their value at least is gone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doreen Roni, ever hand up?
Yes.
Be quicker. Doreen? Doreen Roni?
She's unmuted.
She's unmuted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor? We have a question from John Hofstadter. He's asking, we have a question from John Hofstadter.
Okay, read it up.
Asking, he's asking if we have a twenty nineteen to twenty twenty budget comparison on that we can work off.
Uh, we had one, I'm sure. At least I don't. You can look online, I'm sure it's online.
Yeah.
We lost for the first.
What?
Online.
It's under clerk treasurer's department. Online. Okay. All right. Any other questions or concerns from the Board?
Doreen is asking that we, she's not unmuted on this end.
What?
Doreen is ass, telling.
Doreen is ass, telling us that we are.
Doreen is unmuted.
Okay.
Uh, I believe she needs to change her audio input source on her side.
She's unmuted.
Okay, well, I can't fix our best technical problems. Glenn is managing this one. Everybody else from the board?
I, I've thanked before, I, I just, sorry, Tom, I just, I thanked before Jerry and the department heads. This was an enormous amount of work and I wondered whether it was possible and I, it's, it's, I, I just, thank you for the sacrifices and for the hard work. I admire it and am thankful for it.
Okay.
Echo, echo that briefly, I, I, sorry Nora, I just, and and just to say that I do think, uh, well, I, and I think Jerry mentioned it, uh, this year is, of course, a commitment that is, as, as, this is a beginning also, not the end goal. It's typically that you, of course, follow up, but in in this particular year, we will be, we will be on it, um, you know, time after time.
Yeah.
Every comment is welcome, I, I welcome Glenn's comment. If you, if Glenn, if you heard the, 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 the policy on on capital surplus that was presented, that, for example, would be very much in line with what you said, to use surplus for that. So essentially, it's about careful choices and and not to be just boxing to something. So we'll have to be flexible, but we can do, uh, promise and based on the two, three, four weeks, we can, we can do, we can, we can make a commitment that we'll continue working on this hard with with the help and collaboration of our staff. So thank you to all.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I would echo that, that, you know, what, in adopting this budget, we've made a lot of sacrifices and we've made a lot of cuts. We may not have made enough for what the projected revenues may be or what the actual revenues may be. But it's not set in stone, so the levy is set in stone, but we can make adjustments, we can save money, we can, we, we can, we can be careful. And I think that, that we will be and I think the Budget Committee has provided us with a policy or a recommendation to continue working and continuing to evaluate what the revenues are in this, these uncertain times. And I think, you know, I think the staff did a really great job and I think they're committed to keeping the village running as best we all can. And it's, you know, we, tough choices are made and there may have to be other tough choices made. But I think everybody really pulled together to try and get a budget that we could adopt and I thank them.
Welcome.
Mayor, Mayor Doreen wants to chime in by phone.
I, I don't, do it, chiming in by phone?
She's, that's what she said, she was shooting your phone, I, I don't know, that was the message.
If they dial in, we just need to know the phone number and I can allow them to speak.
Well, we're waiting to see if that happens. My view is the budget is probably the toughest thing the village has faced since the depression. It has been a very tough and agonizing approach to life. I hope I'm a hundred percent wrong and that the budget is a hundred percent right, but I think the revenues are going to be very hard to achieve. Nobody knows what the future is going to hold and what's going to happen over the next couple of months. Uh, the Budget Committee has requested that we continue to monitor it and come up with plans of what to do if the revenue does not materialize. And I think that's a very sound recommendation, which I think the village will be following. Um, Glenn has made a very good point about, uh, the police cars. There have been a couple of things that have been taken out of operating budgets and put it to the capital budget. I don't necessarily think that that's the best practice, but there's been a lot of compromises throughout the entire process. I'm not a big believer of taking the reserves and funding operating costs out of them, which is six hundred thousand dollars. It's been done for the last few years. I think it's a mistake, but in these times, you, you have to try and figure out what you can do and what you can live with. And I commend Jerry and the department heads and the rest of the staff for working exceedingly hard, coming to grips with some very tough choices. I'm not happy with the budget, but I think it's an acceptable budget and I don't, I think, Trustee Lucas has said, we have to keep monitoring it, uh, because things may not be as we are hoping and as predicted.
Okay.
Thanks.
All righty.
Has Doreen joined us or not?
No. I need a motion to end the budget here.
I can't, I just have one, I, can I ask one question before we end this?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so we, last year, we did something that we hadn't done previously. We adopted, um, we didn't adopt a detailed budget, we opted, we did like the object budget. And then we were going to have a bunch of reports that sort of talked about how we move things within, within lines. Um, and I think we didn't have that system worked out perfectly. So this year, we got both the tentative budget and then we got the supplement. Um, are we adopting the detail again as we, but that's which we were going through, you know, with all these budget meetings? Or are we adopting the object level?
Obi, you know?
It's the object level that we're adopting the same thing that we adopted, um, the way we adopted it last year. Um, a little bit is my fault that maybe I'm not as diligent as I should be bringing to you the twenty five and fifty dollar transfers that I do within the, within the, the, um, the account. Um, but I do, I do a few of them towards the end of, towards the, um, every two weeks, just before we publish the, the abstract, there's a few transfers that we do. But most of the transfers, uh, that we do, we bring to the board, uh, like we're doing, you know, in a couple of minutes.
Right.
But there's very few that I'm doing within, within the, uh, within accounts.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion, can I have a second? I'll second, Obi, go roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Winchra?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes, although I'm not happy that other people that wanted to talk could not find a way to talk.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, resolution authorizing budget transfers. Pardon me. Is the first one. And this is transferring. We're gonna get it up. I'm trying to, give me a second, I'm trying to do this on the computer now. And I just need one second. I'm almost there. Uh, go back a second. Thanks, I'm sorry.
Um, I think it's page seventeen on the PDF.
Right, uh, one thousand nine hundred fifty five dollars from traffic violations to one thousand nine hundred fifty five dollars, village court contract services. So everybody see that, resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Any motion?
So moved. Second.
Obi, Stino?
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchra?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Uh, the next budget item to transfer is two A two. Uh, this is from day camp seasonal salaries, five thousand dollars to recreation administration contract service, five thousand dollars. Everybody have any questions or concerns?
I do, I do, I think, actually follows on, on, on Trustee Lucas's, uh, comment that, for example, this one actually is inter, inter, um, I mean, inter groups. So it's object is something that is, was in, in actually interdepartment. Those things come to us, right? Right? But, but they, they come to us, we, 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 we see them as, at this stage. So I, well, I see there's a benefit for staff doing things like this. Uh, as, as I'm you, I was used to the other system before. You would get a sense of what was happening. Here you just see the last effort. So in some, most instances, it's kind of harmless, it's actually, and probably not harmless, but you know, there's always a good reason why you've done this and you're shifting things around, probably saving money. And some others, but, but it does leave us some, sometimes without that idea of what, what was happening, especially for example, if it's, if it's something from, from, you know, e- even if it's within the same group, like within your, your, um, your equipment, transferring money from one to the other has, let's say, from one machinery to another type of machinery, does have implications. So we do have to get to a level, maybe we discuss this, not now, but it was just an example that, that, that we, we need to figure out better control because I, I, I'm a little concerned with that because we, we see it here and it's fine, but it's kind of at this last minute. So as a Board of Trustees, I feel I'm losing a bit of a grip of, of what, what is happening in, in the, in the other, in, in the world of, of, of the, of the actual budget, which is the point. And, and I think we could, we, we need to figure something, something, um, that is, that, that gets us there. Because if I, 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 that's where I think we're losing a little bit of the grip. But anyway, I have no objections to this one, it's just that it came, came, came as an example of, of why, why probably what she was mentioning, uh, kind of makes sense that we need, it's not just the pennies. Sometimes it's just bigger, bigger things that are happening that we need to look at.
Thank you. So I need a motion for this budget transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Obi, Stino?
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winchra?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now the next item on the agenda is the abstract of ordered vouchers and bills. And that comes one million fifty three thousand seven hundred ninety one dollars and ninety six cents. Any other questions or concerns?
I have one, uh, suggestion on page six of forty two. Under contract services, um, April, the fine steering, it says legal professional services performed for March and retainer. I think for the future, we need, should break, break the retainer, whatever other services have been rendered. Can that be done, Augie?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Um.
Nor?
Same page, um, um, it's just, the, the Journal News, HP four pack toner, it sounded like a confusing, it didn't seem that we would be ordering toner from the Journal News. Um.
Was that a misprint, guys?
Yeah, I don't think we did order toner from the Journal News, so.
Yeah, so it's either something that got printed or it's just the wrong item. And I meant to, I meant to send an email today and I wrote it and didn't send it. And then Kellerian Sessions, the, the non-espro stormwater review.
Yeah, I had this.
In the future, just can we say what the project is or is that, is there room to do that?
So where is that?
That's gonna be your bailiwick now, Jerry, right?
Yeah, so there's, there's six of them, there were six reviews, six or seven. Yeah, i- if, if there's, and I, and I think there's room, we'll just put the address. We all know it's in the village, so we'll just put the house number and the street and, and try to list it that way.
Yeah.
Um, Augie, if you just ask Jonathan, I'll show him what I'm looking for as far as that.
Street address and house number?
Yeah, the house number and the street and that's it, that should be sufficient.
Yeah.
Provide a little bit of, that's probably a good idea.
Oh, it's right here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, yep, seven, I got seven, yep.
And then I had one more question, on page twelve, is the time clocks? I assume we're still paying for them even though we're not using them in this time of not touching things.
We're, we're in contract, but yeah, we're, we're still paying for them, but we, we, I hope we can use them soon, but.
Yeah, okay, I just, I just, I, I guess they didn't give us a pass because we can't really use them.
No.
Yeah. The toners are supposed to be for staples.
Yeah, okay, I figured it was just. Thank you.
Um, yeah, it's one of the unintended consequences, you can't use the time clocks, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But we will again.
I do have everyone that works from home, and I think you've seen some of that punching it out.
Yeah.
By email to me and the department head, so.
Yeah.
There's some accountability there.
Any other questions for the board?
Well, as someone who works from home, I think it's, it's very easy to work longer hours from home than when you're leaving the house.
I agree.
Thirty, is Almstead tree and shrub care removal? I guess, I mean, that's, that's been a pretty big line for us and that, I don't know how we save money of that going forward, but that's been a lot, we've been spending a lot of money on.
You have page thirty? I don't have thirty.
I have it on page, I'm sorry, twenty nine.
Twenty nine, yeah. Cut less trees, the, the, there's thousand, forty thousand removed from that line this year, so.
Yep, so, okay.
We just gotta be mindful that we, you know, that line might have to be adjusted if we get a storm or something like that.
Right, yep.
Those situations, yeah, there's situations, is that, that right, you're right.
All right.
I have, I have a question, actually, as we're in page thirty. Page thirty, uh, that's where we have the COVID response. We, we, we funded, we funded with a precisely capital surplus to fifty, like two hundred fifty thousand. And, and I actually, I, I should start by saying, you know, thank you for, not just you, but, um, Jason and everybody here putting, putting, putting an effort to get those items that are needed, uh, not just, of course, masks, gloves, et cetera. So, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm, I'm not questioning that at all, I'm actually thanking you, but I have a, I, I am, I am, I am difficulty understanding certain things where it says contract services because they seem like supplies. Certain, uh, for example, equipment, laptops on page thirty one. And, and also I did see that in last year, weeks, two weeks ago, audit, oh, the, most of the things we were buying are under contract services. So I don't know if it's, uh, it's the way you're buying in or, or the way they are registered, but there's something there that, that, that is, that seems to be, uh, I mean, just warrants an explanation because they are right, they are kind of not the typical contract services that you, that you, that you, that we get.
No. They're certainly not typical. We'll take a look to make sure that, you know, if it's an item that should be under, I mean, it's miscellaneous equipment and you can put anything on this miscellaneous equipment. As far as laptops probably aren't supplies, they could potentially be under miscellaneous equipment. But I think there is a contract that we have with Gov Connection. That may be why it got linked in there.
Okay, so we, we just started two weeks ago, so take a look at, at the two, the two audits. And, and at the end of the day, what we need is for, for the government to reimburse us, so, so maybe, I don't know if this has anything to do with it, but yeah, since we're starting, just, just get them on the right account.
Okay, correct.
Okay.
All right, I need a motion to accept the order of bills of one million fifty three thousand four hundred ninety one dollars and ninety six cents.
So moved.
I'll second, Obi?
Trustee, is it Lucas?
Yes.
Winchra?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt Jezz?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Augie. Later on, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, old business, order of those, resolution, authorizing budget transfer, old business, no business, new business. Resolution, resolutions, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Yet, I am determined to do this online.
Page sixty-six of the PDF.
I know, I got it, I got it. I want to read the, the prologue. In connection with the scheduled approval of the village of American budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the board of trustees should adopt the following resolutions tonight. And this is just delineating resolutions. Resolution to summarize the tentative budget with amounts set forth for Village of America for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Resolution for budget adoption. Resolution to adopt the village tax warrant to levy taxes. Resolutions authorize collection of the American library tax warrant to levy taxes. Just for reminder, that amount is fixed by an election every year in December, not by twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one certification of arrears due for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty unpaid amounts receivable on various projects. Westchester joint waterworks areas for water charges on various properties. The tax warrant. Reallocation funds with appropriations to provide salary increases for non-union employees. And this year, we only went a one percent increase in, and I wish I'd be more, it's a tough year. The, the role good employees who really do a great job. Authorization for investments, authorizations for the levying collection of additional taxes, the charges on various property, authorizing the levy and collection of additional taxes upon termination of exempt status by twenty. Okay. So that's the lineup. Budget resolution A. Village of America, tentative by the appropriations. I'm just gonna read the adjusted, which is what, well, it was forty million. It came down to thirty-seven million five hundred and thirteen dollars and eight hundred and fifty, eight, eight hundred fifty-six dollars. Other than real estate taxes, ten million seven hundred and ten thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars, which is a one point eight million dollar deduction from what we had thought other than real estate taxes were gonna be. So that's what we were talking about before, about why the so many cuts in the budget. So at the end of the day, balance of budget appropriation to be raised by the tax levy, twenty-six million two hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents. Is what we have to raise by the tax levy. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I, I believe the, the number was twenty-six million two hundred three thousand three hundred thirteen dollars.
I understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
So moved.
I have a second.
Yes.
Nora, a second.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Matt Jezz?
With a heavy heart, I vote yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, and thank you to everybody who got us here without any more drama than need be. Budget resolution B, resolution adopting budget for fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty, and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one. Making appropriations for the conduct of the village government and establishing a rates compensation of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Okay. You have that in front of you. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Let me ask a question, I think. In the third, whereas, I think it's, that's where the question comes on, on, on the detail, on the, how the budget is adopted and how, how we follow the control. I, I, I just find it a little confusing. It says budget summary will be introduced at the function and object level for the board of trustees. Why for the board of trustees? Isn't it just? Isn't it? I mean, the board of trustees is just the approval, but why would it be introduced on a function level for the board of trustees? And it says with the village manager reporting on a detailed level or monthly basis, indicating any line that is subject or requires transfers within like accounts. Like accounts is personnel, equipment. Service contract, for example. Monthly reporting will commence on June first. So kind of two questions there. Why, why would it say for the board of trustees? I mean, there's only one budget, right? So that is kind of a misleading.
I don't get what you mean, Victor.
It says the but, the subject, the summary budget will be introduced at a function and object level for the board of trustees.
Right, for board trustees to monitor?
It is not clear. It says, then the village manager, it, it's, I think. It is a, we adopt one budget, there's no two budgets here, one for the board of trustees and one for, for the, for the management. There's only one.
Then.
There's one.
It's function and object level, and that we're doing that, that that was the change. We, it probably, for the board of trustees could just be taken out. I think they were trying to get at is that this was a different reporting protocol than had been in the past. And it was at the behest of the board of trustees. I think what they were trying to get at.
We think, I, I agree that that should be removed, but also I, what we've been getting every month is, is the control expense, where we are. But this report, we've, we've lost, we've, we're not getting it, really.
No. I admitted to that when I was talking to Nora, that sometimes I'm a little lax, but there's just very few. I'll make sure that when I receive the email from Augie's office, whether it's from Laura, from Augie, asking for me to consider a transfer within like accounts, that I make sure that the board is copied on that. This way you can see the minor transfers that I'm required, that I'm asked to make during the year. Just in case, you know, we use the, we use the basketball example all the time. If, you know, if we're gonna buy, if we're gonna buy baseball bats, but instead we're gonna buy less baseball bats, we're gonna buy a few more basketballs. That's what we were trying to eliminate by doing that. That's within like accounts, Victor.
Right, Jerry, but I actually don't, don't like that because I don't want to mess with, 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 with your administration. If you're gonna send me, I'm gonna change, you know, fifty dollars and pass them on so that I can buy more, more, more paper for the copier. I, I, I'm not interested, and I don't think that's the goal of this. The goal of this is to, is for us to keep our appropriations not exceeded. Or if they are exceeded, that we authorize them, right?
Well, that's what you're doing with the control, the, the expense control report, to make sure that the authorization for what was approved is not exceeded. That's why you're getting that one, that report.
Well, because you transfer before, before precisely, and, and to do rightly so, you transfer, and it's never, it's never exceeded, as it should not, because, because that's why we do all these transfers. So what, what is not happening is we're not looking at the detail of the, of the object line or within the object line. And that is where they just be as simple to, to, to simply to keep the other system and just, just make the transfers as, as we exceeding appropriations. Why would that, if, if we're doing the work, why, why shouldn't that be better for us?
So when I'm talking about the expense control report, I'm talking about, in the right-hand column, you have the percentages of the account that has been utilized or has been expended. Is that, I may be calling it the wrong thing.
You know, I, I, can, can can we just work on the, the, the we have here? And we could work out the particulars of how we do the reporting at another time, so we we got a lot to give.
Okay.
Victor, would you be happy if we took out for the board of trustees, would that help?
Yeah, but I, I think, I think then what we need to know is, well, I think that, you know, the our manager has been gracious in saying that this is not happening. I, I think with what's, what's going on, and we just went to an exhaustive review of the budget where we were deciding, well, don't buy the cars precisely. Don't buy the cars, buy the motorcycles. And, and now, now, if that's gonna happen, or if, if, we should need a, some way of reporting, not, not to mess up or to, or to meddle with, with, with the administration, but, but just to, to know that the appropriations are, will be shifted or are in need to be shifted, and we follow, we follow the, the, the the budget process so that we can either, you know, keep, keep it, keep, uh, keep some strict control or make sure that we have that, that, that movement. But I, I do think we, we, we're not, we have to implement this right away. And if that's the case, then we, we should develop that reporting and touch on it as, as soon as, in two weeks from now, so that we move this forward. But we, but we get to a point where we can build on all this work, right? I think, I think we've put such a huge effort here, everybody, that we really need to follow it very closely so that we're not caught by surprise. And we don't want to go to, to micromanaging, not at all. It's on the contrary, is that, that we really get, get just the pulse of what's going, so we can make the changes. And I think it's a kind of our duty, so. So with that understanding, I, 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 I will not object to this.
Okay, can you make the motion, please?
Do you want, Victor, do you want to change the resolution?
Well, we'll make with removing the, or for the board of trustees, remove that, and I won't change any language, it's just the understanding. We want to work on that reporting thing, system that, that works for us, starting in two weeks.
Okay, I, I second the motion as Victor amended.
Comments, comments from others?
Comments?
No, I think, in a second, I'm just waiting to vote.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Winthrop?
Yes.
Trustee Matt Jezz?
Yes.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
There, there are a bunch of people who appear and who are emailing questions.
We're on.
They're just in the
I don't see them.
In this, in the chat.
Oh, there's just not a bunch, but there are a few.
Someone said she's unmuted four or five times. I don't see anything else.
I see something from eight thirty-one from John Hofstadter.
What does he say?
It says, budget, does the three point nine four percent pension increase represent a pre-COVID contribution or expected contribution as of April the twenty-seventh?
Pre-COVID.
Yeah.
And from Doreen, did the board of trustees get my email today regarding for a budget resolution F? Yes, we did. That's all I see, Nora, do you see more?
No, I, there's, I guess there's a couple more. There was another one from John, but we answered it. And no, there's another one from John at eight seventeen, and there was another one from Doreen, just asking if she could be heard. If she kept calling in.
And we couldn't hear her.
Okay.
Budget resolution C. Village tax levy and warrant, setting the tax levy rate. Okay. So the tax, the tax, the budget is three million, no, thirty-seven million five hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. So we need to meet our obligations. The total assessed property is four billion two hundred eighty-eight million six hundred and three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So that, that thirty-seven million gets spread over to four billion. Therefore, the tax levy for Village of America, most years hereby fixed estimated at twenty-six million. Resolve that the sum of twenty-six million two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred three thousand, three hundred thirteen, the same being taxes for the fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty B. And same hereby is levied upon a taxable property in Village of America, and that clerk treasurer be and hereby is authorized and directed to extend it to carry out the role, the amount to be collected from each of the persons named therein and their respective amounts of said tax extended, unsaid tax roll against each such possible of taxable property set forth thereon, be in the same hereby all levy upon each possible taxable property respectively, which such levy includes items such shown on the budget for the fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty, hit to four adopted. Does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Augustina.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Matt Jezz?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Budget resolution, library tax levy and warrant. Resolve that two million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars is, is being levied for the library taxes. And what we're doing in this fiscal year, June first, twenty twenty. Like I said before, village collects the library tax, gives the library, it is not on our tax rolls. A separate line on your village tax bill. You can vote on the library budget, I think it's the first which is in beginning of December, I can't remember.
First Wednesday in December.
In December. And you vote at the library. Does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Augie.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Matt Jezz?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
And interesting, if you don't use the library, it's not open right now, but when it opens back up, the library is a great resource for affordable books and entertainment. So if you're, you're a child and you need help on your homework, they will help you do. Okay, budget resolution E, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Certification of arrears due for unpaid amounts receivable on various properties, including such amounts, it should be announced, it says mounts, in the annual tax levy, authorized in the same levy upon real estate property. Further resolve that special warrant to the collection of such arrears. So levy shall be issued by the village clerk treasurer and collected by him in the same manner and at the same time as other villages. So this is basically allowing us to sell our tax warrants? Yes. Yeah, which we do every year, around March. Does anybody want to make the motion?
So moved.
Before you do, I think Doreen is trying again.
Oh.
Right, try to do it again.
Finally. Hello.
Hey, Doreen.
Finally, I don't know why it took this long for someone to unmute me when I provided my phone number numerous times. However, I wanted to comment on item four A. The arrears, item budget F. Can you please read my email into the record, or I will? Because I did hear that you
Put your email on the record.
Pardon?
Why don't we just stipulate that we will put your email on the record? You know, this, this is, this is highly unusual to have an email about a particular person's bill in a record.
It is unusual because I have no avenue to grieve it, and there's no law in the village that allows the entity, the Westchester Joint Water Works, to do what they have done and charge all kinds of violation fees as well as penalties when my property has not been assessed for its potential to contaminate the water supply.
And this, this is something they do for every commercial property. And this is something they do for every commercial property.
Pardon?
This is something they do for every commercial property.
That's because the Water Works is assuming what the village should assume by law. And there's no law in the village. So I'm not understanding how the Water Works can do what it's doing when it has to be codified in the village code.
But that's a legal question that you can bring up with the Westchester Joint Water Works. This is not what's on their agenda for tonight, Doreen.
Well, if I had the opportunity to speak at the time that you were doing that, which you already approved it, I did have meetings with the Water Works. That is the problem. I have no redress to this problem. So I guess I will have to badger the Water Works to put it on their agenda. How do I do that, Mayor Murphy, since you are the person who represents our village?
Why don't you email the Water Works and CC me?
I'll go back to the email and the phone calls with you, with Mr. Birdsall and the group there. I'll do that right now. Thank you.
Okay, item E. Certification of arrears for unpaid amounts receivable various village properties, including such amounts in the annual tax levy. Did you do this one, right?
No.
Nora, Lucas, we need a second.
I'll second.
Call roll. Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Okay, the next one is Westchester Joint Water Works arrears for water charges on various properties. And this is any amount of $197,927.34. This, when people don't pay their water bill or their fines for not complying, this gets put on their tax amount. And I think the village actually makes money on collecting this.
Can I ask a question about this? Because I don't remember seeing this previously. And there's a tax levy transfer fee. What is that?
That's to us. We charge Westchester Joint Water Works a fee to collect the money.
So it's just, it looks like it might be a percentage?
We've done this. How long have we been doing this?
At least the last four or five years.
I just don't, I just don't remember it. But so it's not just for somebody who might not have been able to put in a backflow valve?
I can't hear you.
It's not just in the case of the previous caller who couldn't put in a backflow valve?
No.
It could be any kind of delinquency in one's water bill?
It's 99% delinquent water bills. And some people are delinquent a while.
So what it goes on the tax levy, this is it actually leaning against the property?
It is, it goes on to, if they don't pay it, if they don't pay the tax bill, if they pay the tax bill, they don't pay, you know, if you don't pay a tax bill, you know, we sell the tax warrant. It just becomes part of the tax.
Is the proposed tax levy transfer fee included in, as revenue on our budget? Because I didn't see that.
Boogie, do you know?
It's part of the amount that we get from the Westchester Joint Water Works?
Okay.
It goes into our water fund.
Yes, it's not in general.
It's not in general, it's in the water.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, need a motion?
Before we do a motion, the question, Doreen raised a very interesting question. And, which is not an arrears of unpaid water bills. It has to do with an issue that according to her email, she's been trying to resolve with them unsuccessfully. Which is different than not paying the water bill for your use of water.
Right, that's true. But what has been going on, my understanding of the email that I sent to all of you from the Westchester Joint Water Works, is that the Westchester Joint Water Works has been trying to enforce this for years. And it does it for every other commercial property. And, you know, she doesn't think that it applies to her commercial property, and she's frankly wrong. And they had the reasons in that email, some show will be foiled tomorrow, about why this was an important item.
I understand that, but I think there's some really, really interesting questions of legality that she has raised, we can't involve the village.
Okay, well, we still have this before us. That can be worked out with the Westchester Joint Water Works.
Not if it's on the tax levy, you can't. That's part of the problem.
Well, then, that's for Doreen to work out with the Westchester Joint Water Works. It's not for members of this board to get involved in the workings of the Westchester Joint Water Works for a member of the HCCMC.
It's not a question of a member of a commission, it's a question of a resident.
It's an officer of the village.
I'd like to move that we take out, we approve the warrants, less the item that is associated with booting. I don't have it in front of me, I don't know what item. That's my motion.
But that was the suggestion that the Water Works made today, I think?
No, it's a suggestion that Doreen made.
I don't think so. I think the Water Works suggested it too.
No, the Water Works said that they would work it out with Doreen. They didn't say to take it off our tax load.
But once it's on the tax roll, it is a requirement to pay the tax, period. Regardless of what the Water Works works out.
So we're gonna do this for one person?
It's the only, the only case that's been presented.
Yeah, okay.
For any, but we don't know what the, any amount would be for any others. What are, what are usage arrears?
There's a motion on the floor. Does anybody want to second Dan's motion?
I'm just, I'm trying to look up this email. You forwarded it, I believe.
I did. "If the property owner wishes to finally resolve the situation and begin the process of installing a backflow device by filling an application with us, you can choose to remove them from the tax levy transfer, and we will work it out with them." I didn't hear that, did you?
I don't know that there's a process. Once it's on a tax levy, it's on the tax levy. I don't know that you can reduce the tax levy.
I guess, though, what the Westchester Joint Water Works is saying is that if Doreen wishes to resolve it and begin the process of installing a backflow device, but I think she's saying she doesn't need to have a backflow device.
That's a different
That's not.
The issue, the issue for me is, there is an issue. And once it gets on the tax levy, it has to be paid.
Yep.
It's sold. One of the two. There is no, unless you can, unless Bob or Augie or Jerry can tell me that there's a way of removing it from the tax levy after it's been levied.
All right, Dan has made a motion. Is there a second?
I mean, I'm not sure we can do it, but I think this is another issue that we need to resolve. That we need to resolve, about whether or not
This is an issue for an individual water payer.
I, this is not the first person that I've heard of who's had a problem with installing a backflow preventer. So I think it's something to address down the line.
I know installing a backflow preventer is costly, and the annual inspection is costly. It kills me every year.
All right, hearing no second. Any motion to accept this?
Actually, there was a question about can you get, be removed from the tax, if she resolves this issue, can she be removed?
No.
Cannot be answered.
There wasn't, the answer was no, Victor. The answer was
You didn't hear that from Augie. He said, no, once you're on the, once you're on the, once you're on the, you just have to pay that and whatever.
Once it's on the tax levy, it either has to be paid or it gets sold and somebody else pays it. Then it's a lean against the property.
It seems to me this is an, this is an issue between the property owner and the Water Works. And they haven't been able to resolve it, and so it's asked on to us to be put into the tax levy. If the property owner, subsequent to our vote tonight, resolves the issue and the Joint Water Works says, oops, we were wrong, I would anticipate that they would issue her a refund.
They can't, the refund for the tax levy, it's already been levied.
They could refund her for the fines.
They could refund her for the amount, but to put the Board of Trustees in the middle of a dispute with Water Works and the property owner, it just invites a nightmare upon the Board of Trustees.
And let's just be honest, a property owner who's very well-known to all of us. I mean, God, there's a propriety here too.
I think it's been answered that there is a redress. That's what we wanted to hear, so I didn't know about. I'm glad that we, that we followed the question, because now I hear there's a redress, so thank you for that. I don't know where we are with this motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Wincher?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
No.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, Budget Resolution, adoption of a tax warrant. The tax warrant comes to $29,232,492.49. You hereby commanded, you were further commanded to return to taxable warrant to village clerk before February 2021 and deliver to the Board of Trustees at the same time an account of the taxes remaining due and unpaid, showing the person or persons to whom the parcel is assessed any amount of tax unpaid. And this is something that I have to sign, huh? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Some moved.
Dan, may I please have a second?
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And, you know, in the future, just tell Steph, when I have to sign something, don't put Tom Murphy, put Thomas, Thomas A. Sorry about that. Sorry, sorry. Next item is Budget Resolution H, real reallocating funds within appropriations to provide for salary increases to non-union employees. And this goes, this goes through all the salaries of the non-union employees. And like I said before, we were going to only give the non-union employees a 1% raise, and that is not an indication of how the job they do. This happened, you know, after the bottom had fallen out of the well, as it were, and it was really the best the village could afford right now. And so I apologize to them for that, and hopefully we will see better days as a community. Okay, a motion on this?
I have one question, and I'm, maybe I missed something, but on line 34, where we're putting in a a couple, I guess, one quarter of an assistant naturalist. I mean, I think, I thought we were just gonna leave the money in the budget for a part-time person, but not going to hire a full-time person until we kind of had a better idea of what the economy was. Because one of the real drivers of our budget are these, you know, are the obligations that we have for employees. And I know it's our goal to keep all the employees that we have, but I think it's hard to do that in this economy if we keep adding more benefits for new employees, adding more employees that will have benefits.
Jerry, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so I remember, we just, I remember now, we didn't remember since the last time we spoke about that. So we would take the, we would leave the assistant naturalist position in there, zeroed out, and put the $10,000 in part-time money, because we wouldn't be hiring this individual until March of 2021 anyway, and we could hire someone at a part-time level. Or, I think you mean seasonal, actually, because we can bring someone in at 37 and a half, part-time. We could only bring them in for 18 hours a week.
And we'll have a better idea in a year or 10 months, whether or not we're gonna be able to fund a full-time assistant naturalist.
Yep, so we're just changing, we're putting $10,000 into, we're taking it out of one line and putting it in another, so there's no material change to anything. Okay.
That being said
With that amendment, I shall move.
Okay.
Second.
Nora, second. Augustino.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Resolve that the clerk treasurer and/or deputy treasurer during a fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2020, authorized to invest monies not needed for immediate expenditure in accordance with the provisions of generous law, the local finance law, and the village investment policy. The village investment policy is adopted every year at the organizational meeting. Somebody make a motion for that, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. The next item is item J. And it says, "I, Augustino, Busco, clerk treasurer of Village of America, hereby certify that the following amounts are due and owing to the Village of America in connection with services rendered, amounts paid by the village on behalf of the various properties identified on the assessment roll and remaining unpaid." Boogie, what is this?
This is basically zombie properties that we go do the landscaping on or whatever. Currently this year, we don't have anything. We're just left with work to review.
Okay, so that's why if we have a property that's derelict between now
And we do the landscaping and the maintenance on.
Yeah, I will make that motion.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Budget Resolution A. Resolve that the village assessor and village receiver of taxes during a fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2020, are authorized to levy and collect additional village taxes upon termination of exempt status of real property in accordance with provisions of real property tax law. So this is if a, somebody has a veteran's exemption.
They sold the house.
Or they sold the house and don't have it, and if you don't have it, this allows you to up the tax levy to what it should be, before the exemption. Everybody got that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
I'll say.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. One thing.
Parrot dog.
Is that it? Was it a little?
Yeah, looks like it.
Don't we have the mosquito contract?
No, 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 that's, that's new business.
That was a smaller celebration before the big celebration.
Okay. You just click on the item and it goes right to it.
Yeah.
Amazing technology, isn't it?
It's impressive.
You guys making fun of me?
Yeah.
No, not at all.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, there you have it. So last year, the Village of America hired a consultant to help us with our mosquito problem.
And the consultant was very helpful, along with Jerry and a village employee who got his license to apply pest pods. They really did a good job of keeping the little, the little buggers under control. And it was very scientific and very well done. And Jerry thinks that it would serve us to bring him back for one more year so that we could just get more information and more guidance so we can go ahead with this in the future on our own. Jerry, in some substance, is that it?
That is, Mayor. And it's to prevent and avoid the spraying of the more toxic because we're trying to, we're trying to use an all-organic type of program right now.
And we just decided to, and the one, two, three, four, fourth whereas cost not to exceed.
Right.
Yeah, Dan has a new one. Dan provided the new one, I think, in an email just a, a half hour ago.
Okay, so.
On off, I think you sent one out.
I will work on that. I think it was Mr. Navadi who sent the original agreement. So I'll follow up with them tomorrow to.
Resolution we're talking about, Dan.
Oh, no, I don't. Did you amend the resolution? I'm sorry.
Sally said she was gonna do that, I believe.
Okay, we'll, we'll just amend it. I'll make a motion, amending this resolution to say anticipated cost to not exceed $6,001.
Yep.
There a second?
Second.
We call. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you very much to the village employee who's done an excellent job doing this. It was much better last year. Welcome. Uh, the next item on the agenda, it's resolution authorizing execution of agreement with ConEd is in restoration work. This is on, pardon me, this is on Fennamore Road. Did a lot of work installing a new gas main. So we are going to get ConEd to pay for paving Fennamore Road in the Village of Mamaroneck. I think from Hoyt to the end of the Village of Mamaroneck going north from curb to curb, milling and paving. Jerry, is that right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Is anybody having questions or concerns?
No, thank, thank Kernani. That was good.
Very good. Excellent job.
Any motion?
So moved.
Please second?
Second.
Augustino. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is authorization to execute agreement to modify Department of Environmental Con- Conservation's order of consent. And this was edited in work session.
Mayor, I resent the resolution to you all. You should have it.
Yep, 7:32 PM.
Okay. Somebody just want to point out the change. So we, we took out the dollar amount.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Was that the only change?
We made reference to the, I, a inter-municipal agreement with
The county.
County that is in line with the consent order. And we placed that for the other paragraph that, that was inconsistent with the letter from DEC. So it was just two paragraphs that were, that were changed.
Okay. Using this, summarizing the trustee to four, just delineated and knowing that the corrected resolution will be in the record, I will make the motion to accept this.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to a change order to fix the marine pile driving. Jerry, you want to go through this a little bit?
Uh, Mayor, in the last few weeks, we've had some significant damage to our marina. We had several sections, eight by 20, that uh, were a casualty of a moon tide, I'm told. I don't know what a moon tide is, but it's something that can destroy things. And so, so we have a, we have an amendment to the contract that we awarded several weeks ago, actually, a month, a month, two months now. I think it's two months now to replace 11 piles and replace five sections of docks. For the amendment is $30,400 to complete the necessary repairs that were, that were an issue at the A and B dock.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Somebody want to make a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Augustino. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is communications to board round two. I think our old friend Glenn has his hand up.
Who wants to chat?
Glenn? Glenn?
I'm here. He had to unmute me. Um, I actually have had my hands up for several subjects and got skipped over. So to go back to the auditing of the bills, A 71420416, Lanza Fields Lights, ConEd, 136206. What lights are those for at Lanza Field? Are those the path lights that go around the park? This bill wasn't for March. What lights are we talking about for a ConEd bill that, that's listed under Lanza Field for March? Does anybody know?
No, not off the top of my head. I don't know. I gotta look it up.
Okay. The, the only reason I ask is I suspect it might be the, um, the, um, path lights that go around. And if that's the case, in order to get some budget savings, because you're talking about 15,000 a year, is there any way that we could turn the lights off from, let's say midnight until dawn or something? Because the park's supposed to be completely closed anyway. And if you're only talking about the path lights, it's not really doing much for security in a closed park. But that's something you can look at. Fennamore Road paving. Um.
What page?
Fennamore, uh, paving. This is a different subject. This is the Fennamore Road paving project that you're approving with ConEd's money?
Oh, yeah.
Are we, that, can we make sure that all the transient, uh, water pipes and the sewer is all completely repaired on that before we spend all that money paving? We make sure that the, uh, see what other, whatever water pipes need to be replaced there? And if the sewer contract is going to be working under there? Because what's the sense in spending all that money to pave Fennamore Road if it's just gonna get torn up in the next two years? So that's definitely, it says, I know you have the sewer project. I don't know what they have planned for Fennamore Road. But at the same time, I would definitely look at making sure whatever has to be done with the water pipes is done under Fennamore Road. You spend all that money to pave it, then you got a job that will last for 10 years. You don't have to worry about people going back in. Okay. Third, on the subject of the Water Works, I sent Nora a email. The Water Works came in and made a presentation. And I believe they were telling you that the emergency repairs were running up over a million dollars a year. My question is, that what we're averaging? And if it is, uh, I'd be, I believe Nora and Dan were both on the right track with the fact that are we better off just turning around and doing 13, 14 million dollar bond? And replacing all the water pipes? Because your financing on that at this point would probably be less than what you're paying on the emergency repairs. You'd save money on lost water. You'd save money on overtime when there's a water break. You'd save money on water leakage in the village. You could actually probably save money to the taxpayers on their water bill in year one. By year five, you're talking about somewhere with, uh, construction inflation and the fact that you're spending all that money on emergency repairs. You'd be talking about saving the taxpayers a half a million dollars a year year five after the project is done. So I would definitely contact the Water Works. How many of these pipes actually have to be completed in the village? They've been repairing these pipes for at least 15 years. There's gotta be a finite number. And if the sewer replacement is costing you 12, 13 million dollars, I can't see how replacing the water pipes in the village would actually cost you more than that. So I think that is something you could give Water Works, the Budget Committee. I think that in this case, even though we're on a very tight budget, this is a plus-plus on both sides.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. And Glenn, I did not get an email from you. So did you?
I'm, I'm sorry that it didn't go through. I, yeah, I'd actually, what, the, the questions I asked was very simple. What are we averagely paying on emergency repairs from the joint Water Works? Because I think this year, they, they said it was like a million 38,000.
It's been about a million every year for the last few years.
Yeah, you could turn around. If you could get a bond at like four, four, three or four percent, you could actually bond 14 million dollars and your payment per year would be 600, 965,000 dollars. You would actually be paying less on your bond if you turned around and put the project. And considering you're doing the sewer anyway, maybe you could tie the water replacement lines into the sewer replacement lines. Just do one large project, get it the price even lower. And you'll be done with both the sewer lines and the water lines, which means you won't have to rip up the streets of Mamaroneck for 30, 40 years. And like I said, you could have cost savings on the water in year one. And the unfore, the unseen savings is we pay for water leakage in this village all over the place. What that amount is, I'm not sure. But you would literally be ending 90% of your water leakage in the village. It means that you wouldn't have damaged roads from water leakage. You wouldn't get sinkholes. You wouldn't have infiltration from water leakage into the sewer system. You wouldn't have to pay overtime for police. DVW to go out block off roads at night. You wouldn't have the expense and inconvenience of diverting the lines. And you could probably do the project simultaneously with doing the sewer lines, if you could possibly somehow do it in, in one bid. Because I'm sure the company that does sewer lines also does water lines. It's very similar work. If you could somehow do that all once, now you rip up the, uh, you rip up the streets once instead of two, three, four times or every time a water line breaks, which has to be another great savings. Literally, you could do a 13, even just doing the bond and repairing, if you could do most of the water work with a 13 million bond and Augie can punch the numbers of what you're looking at. Interest-wise on bonds currently, you would in year one be paying less than what you're paying in emergency repairs right now. So something to crunch, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Stay well. All right. Update from the village manager?
Mayor, I don't have any updates tonight.
Okay. Mr. Clerk Treasurer?
Yes, Mayor. File for the record is the extension of the local emergency declaration.
The village attorney?
Excuse me, Mayor. Local law two of 2020, which concerned the traffic commission membership, was filed and became effective on April 3rd.
Thank you. Minutes, boards, commissions, committees, minutes of board trustees, work session, work session and regular meeting of April 13, 2020?
Just us.
What?
It's just us. No other boards.
Oh, yes. And budget work sessions of April 14, 15, 20th, 21st, 22nd and 23rd. That's one, two, three, four, five. We had six meetings about the budget. So, you know, we earned our money. Sounds about $2 an hour, I figured, one time. Any motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Hold a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.